Welcome to the Board of Commissioners meeting for September 19th. Please join in the pleasure of the leader, Mr. Sanders.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of Georgia, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our hearts.
And before we get started, we have, oh, I totally moved aside. Okay, thank you. Now, I have a couple of introductions to make. One is our brand new county council, Colton Colton. Many years ago, he was an assistant county councilor. He's done many great, wonderful things since then and has graciously consented to come back and be our county council after we lost our previous councilor. And next on, we have a presentation by Jeff Lang and Linda Maxim on a new health clinic. Come on up. Linda, you're coming up?
I will, anyway.
Good morning, Jeff.
Good morning. If you don't know, Jeff is the administrator for the Coquill Hospital.
Hi, I'm so, um, is the presentation?
Working on my slide.
Working on it. So, I want to thank you all for your time today. I understand you have a lot of business on your agenda, so we won't take a lot of time, but I just wanted to come and talk a little bit about our hospital here in the community and then allow my colleague Linda Maxim to talk about a couple of exciting projects that we have upcoming in the near future here. So, just to give you a sense, that's, of course, our building. Give you a sense of, next slide, please, who we are. We're an independent health system here in Coquill. We involve both the hospital, multi-specialty clinics, we provide behavioral health services in the community, and I like to think that we're a good community partner, so, and I want to stress that. That's really our mission and our goal, is to assist wherever we can assist. We provide your typical hospital services, inpatient observation and swing bed services. We provide full x-ray and lab and respiratory therapy. We have an emergency department in our hospital. I hope folks don't ever need to use it, but if you do, we're here and available for you. And within our emergency department, we have fully board-certified emergency medicine-trained physicians. That's something that we're very proud of. We see about 6,500 visits in our emergency department each year, and we're a Level 4 Trauma certified facility. So, I can tell you from experience, my last hospital, we were a Level 3 trauma facility. We see more trauma in this facility than I've seen in any hospital that I've ever been at. It's just a dangerous place to live, so.
And, if I may interrupt, I've been up there several times, the emergency room, various items, and amazing service. And, and within less than five minutes, and nurses there taking your vitals, and then the doctor comes in, it was, it is amazing. And I hear stories across the nation about, oh, we waited out in the lobby for two or three hours and we finally got in and all that kind of stuff. And it's a highly efficient operation.
Yeah, thank you. So, one of the stories I like telling about our facility, our hospital really was started in this community because of the logging mills coming together related to an accident for one of their workers. And the impetus for the hospital was to have an emergency room here, so that if people were injured up in the hills outside of town, that they would have closer emergency care. So, it's a great story to tell. But our impact in the facility, people don't realize, we're about a $65 million gross charge facility. We pay out 25, $24 million in salaries and benefits to our employees, which all helps the economic viability of our area. So, we're a district hospital, a unit of government. We do, at this time, have community support through a tax levy, and we collect about $850,000 through levy. We have clinics, we're going to talk a little bit about that. Right now, in our Coquill clinic, we have three family physicians, two internal medicine physicians, three family nurse practitioners, an orthopedic physician assistant. We just recently hired a gynecologist, who is a GYN surgeon that will be in our facility, as well as other outreach specialists. So, those are all employers, providers that are employed by the hospital. The medical center also has a clinic with two physicians in the same building. So, we also have other clinics that Linda is going to talk about that are coming online, where we'll have a physician and a nurse practitioner stationed there as well. We also are locally a strong supporter of educational activities. We have many med students, SWAC RNs come to us for training. And so, right now, we have 13 employed providers and soon to be up to 20 across our total organization. Most people don't know that. I think when I got here, we had two. Next. And here's a picture of some of our providers in our clinic setting. Some people in the audience may know those folks, but it's tough to keep this slide updated because we're adding providers every week. Next slide, please. I want to talk just about a couple of things administratively that are, I believe, exciting. The first is, we expect to become joint commission accredited. The joint commission is one of the most well-known hospital accreditation companies within the nation. They have roughly 22,000 accredited organizations, and so the standards that we follow in our hospital for quality and safety will be no different than you would find at Bay Area Hospital, or OHSU, or even the Mayo Health System. So, it's that well-recognized of an accreditation system. I also want to talk a little bit about governance. A governance project is something that our Board of Directors has been looking at for multi-years, and really, it is around trying to ensure that the hospital has the best system of leadership that it possibly can. Next slide. So, why look at governance? Well, our governance system hasn't changed since the 1950s. It's required or laid out in statute under the Act that creates district hospitals. But when you think about it, what in our lives hasn't changed since the 1950s? Probably nothing, right? So, so that's why our Board, just as our hospital, is looking at ways to stay relevant and improve and be successful in today's world, our Board of Directors is as well. District hospitals face significant headwinds. There are challenges that face or headwinds that really affect district hospitals and not other hospitals. Things like payment reform, market isolation, and consolidation. So, it places us at a competitive disadvantage. Let me give you an example. We're required to comply with the public bidding requirements. Let's say we have a surgeon that wants to come in and provide services at our hospital, and they were trained and use a certain piece of equipment, could be a knee scope, for example. If that system is above a certain dollar limit, we have to go out for public fit, right? I don't know about you, but I don't want a surgeon using a piece of equipment that they weren't trained on and that they're not familiar with, operating on my knee, if they purchased it because it was low as bid, so. So, those are just some examples. Really, our goal of our Board is to ensure that we have a locally-controlled healthcare system that provides the services to the community that the community needs, and the caveat here is without public support, and that is our ultimate goal. So, next slide. So, we've been looking at a hybrid not-for-profit model. You'll hear more about this in the future. We're not anywhere close to it, but this is the recognized transition method throughout the nation for hospitals to transition from being a public entity to a private not-for-profit. What this would do is it would have our Board of Directors create a new private nonprofit entity. That entity's board would be seated, initially, it's our Board of Directors, that board would be seated by our Board of Directors, and they would have the relationship between the bylaws and the articles of incorporation, which were developed by the Board of Directors, that we manage right now. And then the operation would be leased to that entity by the Board through a lease system. So, it's another way of operating more efficiently and having the outcomes that we want to have. Next slide. And the last thing, I'm sure everybody has heard, we're in the process of trying to do a building project on our campus. Now, we see a medical office building built right next to where the entrance is, up on third floor, on the site where the old hospital building is. This is really a necessary project because of all of our growth in physician and recruiting. We just don't have space to bring in more providers that the community needs. Right now, our budget is $20 million, and that would be fully and completely funded by hospital operations, not by public support. We're hoping that we will be able to get into the ground in March for this project, so. Now, I'll turn it over to Linda to talk about some exciting things within our organization.
Thank you. Thank you for welcoming us here today. The hospital district, as a hospital district in state of Oregon, is required to do a needs assessment periodically, and I believe that's every three years. In our health assessment, we wanted to understand the needs of the community, and providing and responding to those needs is a very important measure of the success of our hospital, as well as aligns with our mission and our strategic plan. The primary healthcare needs that were identified in our hospital district as that assessment was completed was to continue the medical services and strengthen those services within the communities that we serve, to address mental health services and needs within the community, address substance use disorder needs, and supports working within our district, as well as working with partners like our public health department, and also care and protection for youth and vulnerable adults, and strive to reduce chronic conditions. And when we look at population health as a region, we want to be able to identify what those needs are and be able to focus our care on those needs to respond and help our community be well and healthy. So, the question is, how do we fulfill those needs? If we could go to the next slide, please. Coming up with a plan in response to our strategic goals is a very important next step for our health district, and as Jeff said, we are expanding in the work that we're doing. We've identified that the communities to the east of our hospital and our main campus for our primary care services currently exist has a void in services, and our desire is to address those and expand our primary care services. We have successfully secured a building. The Umpqua Bank Building has been vacant for at least 12 to 14 months, and is a building that's easily accessible, very close to where our public transportation drops individuals off in the community. Accessible by road, meets ADA requirements, and is of the size and the nature of a building that could very easily facilitate a six-room clinic, to which we have now gone into lease, working with a local community member who owns that building. And we're really pleased to announce that we'll be providing primary care services in the early part of 2024 after we go through our construction and remodeling project. We have secured a physician already that has been practicing in Coos County. That physician will join us in October practicing at Coquill, and then moving over to Myrtle Point as our lead physician. I'm just thrilled to be able to bring a physician into Myrtle Point. I think that that's a critical part of our strategic plan, to be able to expand our services. And working with that physician will be a very tenured nurse practitioner, also who has been already working in the Coos and Curry County areas. Integrating in behavioral health services with a licensed clinical social worker based in Myrtle Point, integrating in behavioral health and substance use disorder services, as well as practice management with the registered nurse vaccine programs, reproductive health programs, as well as an outreach worker to assist people in enrolling in Medicaid and other services needed for transportation. We want to be able to provide primary care services and assist the community, but also helping a community be well and live well is a critical part of what a primary care clinic can do in a health district. So, more to follow as we move forward in our project, to be able to inform the community and the county of the services that we will be providing. I will leave copies of these slides for you, and it does outline the kinds of services that we will be providing. So, that's our first announcement in responding to the community needs assessment and the services that we will be expanding on. If we could go to the next slide. I'm also very pleased to announce that we will be focusing on creating a new clinic, or excuse me, pharmacy, in the Coquill community. We've secured a building in downtown Coquill that will have a facility within that to provide not only pharmacy services under a 340B pharmacy, as well as a retail pharmacy. That will open in approximately March of 2024. Working with our current team of pharmacists, we are going to be expanding that to bring in Monday to Friday pharmacy services with pharmacists, pharmacy technicians, and that facility will also be able to respond to patient and community needs for durable medical equipment. We know that within our county, we have two facilities, retail facilities, that do provide DME. We've been working with our CCO and have had very positive response to our concept of blending pharmacy as well as DME to support the community, and that'll also be staffed by a community health worker that will be certified by the state of Oregon to assist people with Medicaid enrollment and respond to community needs. So, our ability to expand on services that we believe will give our patients choices, choices and the ability to manage a 340B pharmacy will also allow our patients within our health center and within our hospital district enrolled for services at Coquill Valley Hospital District to have reduced prices on medications through the 340B program. But important in bringing this pharmacy in was we identified the need that there may be other patients and other providers that will want to support the pharmacy in sending their patients to our pharmacists and our support services, and our pharmacy will run two inventories of retail as well as a 340B. The 340B program is a program managed under the Public Health Service Act that allows critical access hospitals and federally qualified health centers to open up 340B pharmacies, and the revenue that is generated within our pharmacy, as with other revenue from our hospital district, is reinvested back in our local community instead of going to shareholders and outside our community. So, I'm very pleased to present the two projects that we'll be working on for 2024 and expanded health services through our health district. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you for sharing.
Thank you.
Pretty remarkable things you're doing. There were a lot of good things going on in our county. This is right amongst the top of those. Thank you so much.
Yeah, it's, uh, it's amazing what you're able to do. Appreciate you telling everybody.
You're welcome. Very much.
Okay. Also, I am a bit remiss in that normally, we have staff and a few folks, maybe three or four at the most here, so I'm glad that there's a lot more participation today. It's, it's most welcome because a lot of times, we just go through our county business and don't really know how the citizens feel about things, so thank you all for being here. With that, we will move on to 3A approval of amendment number one, IgA 171315, Oregon Health Authority, and Mike Rowley and Dr. Sutcliffe. Mike.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning, Mike.
Uh, let's see. The first amendment we have here is state amendment to receive funds in the amount of about $17,000, and this is for parent-child interactive therapy, which we had two rooms specifically built for this, where there is an observation room attached to the therapy room, so that it can provide this specific service.
Move to approve amendment one to IgA 171315, Act 0, Oregon Health Authority, and authorized Department head Mike Rowley to sign.
Second.
Discussion with the board? No? Discussion with the audience? No? All favor?
Aye.
Moving on to 3B, request approval of amendment number two, IgA 173256, Oregon Health Authority, Mike.
Yes, this is another state contract that extends the date of our contract for another six months and provides additional $99,000 to Cruz Health and Wellness. This is for our Behavioral Health Choice Model Program, which is for high-needs residential clients.
And listen.
Move to approve amendment two to IgA number 173256-2, with Oregon Health Authority and authorized Department head Mike Rowley to document.
And a second to that.
Discussion with the board? Question with the audience? All favor?
Aye.
Moving on to 3C, request approval amendment number one, IgA 180006, with Oregon Health Authority, Mike.
Yes, this is another contract from the state. It is increasing funds for our tobacco program, as well as it starts us taking over the Tobacco Week Ale License Program, which we will be taking over the inspections of the tobacco establishments from the state.
Move to approve the first amendment to IgA number 180006-0, with Oregon Health Authority and authorized Department head Mike Rowley to sign.
And a second.
Aye. Second, and I would mention it for those in the audience, that the total grant, the total grant award with this increase will be in excess of $1,040,000.
Any other discussion with the board? Discussion with the audience? Are you in? All favor?
Aye.
3D, request approval, IgA 181436, with Oregon Health Authority, Michael.
Yes, this is another state agreement where we are getting about $20,000 to support Salvation Army by purchasing, uh, gosh, emergency preparedness supplies for their shelter.
Nice. I move to approve IgA number 181436-0, with Oregon Health Authority and authorized Department head Mike Rowley to sign.
Second.
Any other discussion?
I'm thrilled that we're supporting the Salvation Army's efforts. Those guys are doing a great work, and, uh, very, very good.
Any other discussion with the board?
No, sir.
Audience? No? All favor?
Aye.
All righty. 3E, request approval agreement with Crook County for pass-through funds.
Uh, yes, earlier this year, we, or the Commissioners approved us getting the money for the home visiting program to research tablets, and it was kind of a joint project with other counties, and now we are dispersing some of the money to Crook County for those tablets.
Move to approve and assign agreement to pass-through funds to Crook County, Oregon.
Second.
Discussion with the board? Discussion with the board? Audience? Are you in? All favor?
Aye.
All right. 3F, request approval amendment number one to Contract Bay Area First Step.
Yeah, so, we have already accepted the funds from the state. This is a pass-through contract at Bay Area First Step. They provide peer services and peer education and training for the community. The amount of this contract is $443,000 for two years.
Move to approve and sign first contract amendment with Bay Area First Step.
Second.
Discussion with the board? Discussion with the audience? Very good. All favor?
Aye.
3G, request approval employment agreement with Dr. Pay Harris?
Uh, yeah, we have drafted a contract with Dr. Harris to provide, or as an employee, to work for Cruz Health and Wellness. She is dual credentialed. She can do physical health and behavioral health, and she will help manage the behavioral health medical providers.
Move to approve and sign employment agreement with Dr. Pay Harris effective September 19th, 2023.
Second.
Discussion with the board? Is it my recollection that we've been working for a long, long, long time to come?
Yes, we had someone for a year. That was the least, and then she left, so this is our second person.
So, so Dr. Harris is going to be, uh, providing nurse practitioner services, even though she's a doctor?
Yes, she is not a medical doctor, I understand. She's a nurse practitioner with a doctor.
Oh, a PhD?
I don't know.
I got it on the back of the room.
Any other discussion with the board?
No.
Discussion with the audience? Are you in? All favor?
Aye.
Okay. 3H, request to extend time frames of waiver fees for metal collection.
Thank you, Mike.
Yeah, thank you.
Paul Slater.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Paul Slater, please, up right there. Um, yeah, for several years now, the Commissioners have believed fees from taking money from the potential cost, so we're just asking to do that again for another year.
I move to approve with waiving fees for metal received at the Beaver Hill Transport Station until September 30, 2024. Second.
Okay. Discussion? Discussion with the audience? Nope? All right?
Aye.
I guess it'd be a good day to haul my scrap metal. Got spent for years.
I would comment, it really, it amazes me how much metal we get out there.
It is kind of amazing how much.
Because we don't pay for it, but it's a great convenience to someone that's bringing in other things to Beaver Hill, and I don't know that all metal recyclers take refrigerators and freezers like we do.
As long as they've been properly processed first, there's certainly you gotta remove from them.
All righty. 3I, request to declare rotary pender of surplus of metal to sell and at auction.
So, this is a brush aug that was purchased before my time in 2018. It was a joint venture between Parks and Solid Waste. They thought they would share it to do some money with both departments, and it frankly just has not been used and hasn't worked like they thought it would, so we just auction it. Somebody else can get some to do some of it.
And I had a discussion yesterday with the Parks Director. They have a very old one similar to this. They would like this one and then put their very old one that's broken up for auction or sell or whatever. If you can get a hold of the Parks Director.
Yeah, I can do that, so we can kind of pull this one, right?
So, we'll pull this one. 3J, request to declare 2007 Silverado with surplus for auction.
Um, this truck has basically been its useful life for us. It's got a little over 200,000 miles on it. Its maintenance has went way up on it over the last couple of years.
I move to declare equipment number 251 a surplus and to sell in this and offer auction at all. Second.
Discussion? Discussion with the audience?
Yes.
Phil.
Uh, excuse me. You've got about four or five items that are sell or auction. Uh, the auction part.
Hang on a minute. Go over to the mic, then introduce yourself.
Phil Thompson, who's, but all I'm questioning is, you've got sell or auction. Now, if you sell it, how's the people gonna know? On auction, everyone knows if you just sell something, just certain amount of people, certain people would have the right to buy this. Let's say the Silverado at the road department, guys there knows what they think it'll be, and they'll say, okay, here's what we'll pay for. On an auction, it's a little bit different. Everybody has a choice to bid.
I can address that. I can also address that.
Okay. So, you know, I, well, you probably just, maybe we should have been a little more clear in what our request was for. It's an opportunity, we auction.
Thank you very much. It says sell slash auction, we sell at.
At auction.
So, maybe in the future, we'll try to be more clear.
And all those sales are done on the website, publicsurplus.com. So, all members of the public can be a member of that site and buy off of it.
And a lot more than Cruz County, but so, sorry.
I only have one more thing. Even if we were not to auction it, but to negotiate.
Even if we were not to auction it, but to negotiate a sale, we have a requirement, Creuse County rules to post public notice of the sale, at least twice thirty days before we anticipate to sell. So, regardless of the manner of sale, we have that requirement.
Any, any, what else in the audience? Do we have one? Are you there? Seen them? All favor?
Aye.
Okay, moving on to Three K, request to declare nineteen ninety-five Ford F two fifty to auction.
Same story here, this truck's got over two hundred and thirty thousand miles on it. It's just made its useful life, so we'd like to auction it off.
Move to declare equipment number two forty-eight a surplus and approve to sell at auction.
Second.
Okay, discussion? Discussion with the audience? Are you there? All favor?
Aye.
Three L, request to clarify a plasma cutter surplus and auction off.
This is one of the few items we have in our shop. I'll have a few others coming in the future that are old, they've had them for a long time, they don't operate properly, or they don't really fit into any of the work they do anymore. This one just doesn't operate. So in this case, we'd like to auction it off, maybe somebody out there is willing to provide short and do some of the work, but financially it doesn't make sense for us to repair it.
Move we declare the plasma cutter as surplus and approve to sell at auction. Second.
Discussion? Discussion with the audience? All favor?
Aye.
Three M, request approval to purchase used rock screen from Luke LeCory.
So this should be our last major item to buy for kind of revamping our crushing operation up at the Luke LeCory. We, this one, proposing to purchase is a used screen for eighteen thousand dollars, and we've got two other comparables, one is twenty-five thousand, the other is thirty thousand. So this was the most cost option. This would kind of complete the circuit we're planning on putting together up there by next spring.
I move that we approve purchase of a used Hewitt Robbins rock screen from David Mail not to exceed eighteen thousand dollars. Second.
Was this something that was budgeted for?
Yeah.
Any other discussion with the Board?
No, sir.
Discussion with the audience? Seen? All favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Any force three, this next with three N, but I had assumed, heard he was really, oh, Cole's here.
Yeah.
It's Cole.
How's it going?
Good morning, Cole.
Morning.
Go ahead.
We have five different bidders in our ECT contract this year. Rainforest, raindrop reforestation was a low of seven hundred and seventy-four dollars per acre, so.
Okay, what should we do?
I move we award the pre-commercial thinning, number one dash two three, the rain, raindrop reforestation in the amount of one hundred and seventy-four dollars per acre. Second.
Discussion with the Board? Discussion with the audience? All favor?
Aye.
All righty, request approval of twenty twenty-three dash twenty-five, IGA sixty-five twenty-six, Department of Corrections. Corrections Director Mike Chris.
Morning.
Morning, Michael.
Here to ask the Board to approve the two-year IGA with the Department of Corrections to fund parole probation services in Creuse County. There'd be the twenty-three, twenty-five intergovernmental agreement, sixty-five, twenty-six between the State of Oregon and Creuse County Community Corrections. The funding source is the State of Oregon Department of Corrections Grant and Aid. Ask the Board to approve the twenty-three, twenty-five IGA intergovernmental agreement, sixty-five, twenty-six between the State of Oregon and Creuse County Community Corrections. We've got the important one.
I'll answer this.
The four million eight hundred and fifty, that is on the second page? That's four million eight hundred and fifty thousand, one hundred and sixteen dollars to fund our operations.
And how's that compared to last?
It's, it's down.
Down.
We were cut statewide, it was thirty-some million. I think it hit us about six hundred thousand for the two-year cycle. So, we've had some reductions, we've got some services, have retirement, and so we're still looking at how we're going forward. We still see our population dropping some. It's leveled some, it's not like it was with the removal of the foul measure one-ten cases. It's, it's hurt us, and so, I hope maybe at some point if those cases get restored, it'd make a huge impact on us, so.
It's hurt a lot of us. I move we approve the two thousand twenty-three through twenty-five, IGA number six five two six between the State of Oregon and Creuse County Community Corrections and authorize Chair to sign. Second.
Discussion with the Board? Congratulations, Mike.
Thank you, sir.
They do, you, you and your office, I should say, do an amazing job.
Thank you.
I have a great team.
Lots of good business.
As you do.
Anybody in the audience want to discuss this? All favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you.
I have a three P, request approval to change pay grade for Corrections Secretary Three, position and approval of resolution to reclassify Alyssa Daniels. Yes, Michael?
Asking the Board to reclass to Corrections Secretary Three, that's Alyssa Daniels, after consulting with HR, and have requested the Board reclass to a Corrections Secretary Three position from pay grade one, four fifteen to pay grade four sixteen, which is the same pay grade as legal secretaries at the District Attorney's Office. We've always had a comparable back and forth where we pay the same rate. Also request approval of resolution twenty-three zero seven one seventy P, reclassifying Alyssa to pay grade four sixteen effective October first, twenty twenty-three. The Aspen Union has been notified of this proposed change. The funding source, zero one one dash two four zero zero dash four two three ten dash zero one, the state grant and aid funding, asks the U.S. to approve the reclassification of Corrections Secretary Three position to pay grade four sixteen effective October first, twenty twenty-three. Ask to approve and sign resolution twenty-three dash zero seven dash one seven.
I move we approve reclassification. You can breathe now.
I can breathe.
I move we approve reclassification of Corrections Secretary Two position to pay grade four one six effective October one, two thousand twenty-three, and approve and sign resolution twenty-three. And I have here a correction of the number to oh nine dash two oh three A.
Who's the Secretary?
Oh, that's a, okay, Secretary Three, excuse me.
Yes.
Change that. Or?
Wait a second, leave a second?
Uh, yes, a second with the same understanding of the corrected number.
All right, go ahead.
I, I wonder if that's appropriate, the corrected number now that we, it's noted on ours, it's a different resolution number.
Who made that correction?
Actually, Kelly made the correction.
Okay, all right.
What should we do? Address Kelly. Audience? All favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
You know, for the, for just about, excuse me, Sheriff, for people in the audience, I want you to know that the Community Corre-- sorry, Sheriff, the Community Correction Department does a wonderful job. They are entirely funded by the state, out of money the state saves by dealing with people who have had legal problems here locally rather than imprisoning, putting them in prison at the state. And we have a very, very effective, correct, parole probation department under Mike's leadership with some really good staff, so. And again, it's, it's not, not a penny of local tax dollars goes to support it then.
I'll second that. My staff meetings are among the most enjoyable things that I get to do as a Commissioner, so.
Thank you, sir.
Great for me. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I have a three Q, request approval of BLM typical patrol contract. Sure.
William, Sheriff?
Good morning.
I care.
So this is a renewal of the BLM patrol contracts, a hundred percent funded by BLM for one of our deputies in the amount of one hundred and seventy-five thousand, seven hundred and twelve dollars. Just asking you to review and authorize a charity assignment.
To review and authorize charity assigned BLM contract in the amount of one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, one hundred and seventy-five thousand, seven hundred and twelve dollars.
And I second that.
Discussion? Three J?
Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Well, I have a question.
Yes, Rob Taylor.
The BLM land that you're going to be monitoring or tracking, patrolling, I guess is the word, is that land open to the public?
What was the question?
Is it open to the public?
Does the BLM land?
Yes, is it open to the public?
Yes, I think most of them are.
Yeah.
Do they have roads on there that you could drive into this land?
Oh, yeah. I think you do. They're nice, long roads.
You could easily get lost there.
Yeah, it's not that, no, we've got to use our share to patrol BLM land, even though we're getting paid for it, and yet our roads into our public forest lands are still closed. And I don't know if you guys have noticed this a lot, now that those roads are closed, a lot of people are parking at the gates, and you can't even turn around if you need to turn around in those areas. You used to be able to turn around because there weren't no one parking there. Now you've got a bunch of congestion created by your road closure. So I'm still a little upset about that, but it just seems ironic that we're patrolling BLM land that we can go on, but yet we keep our land closed because we don't have the money to patrol it. So I just want to make that point before you vote.
I would, I think that's a good point. BLM has a lot more money than we have, Rod. They do.
Any other comments?
Too much.
Very good.
Aye.
Moving on to three R, request approval of special warranty, name change above mountain site release, oh, the computer site.
Yes, Sheriff. This is where we have our site, computer site. This is a little more confusing, and really it's kind of a, the impetus for this is an accounting issue. It came to our attention that we actually missed a couple of payments because, as they so often do, some of the forestry ownership changed hands a couple of times without our notice, and we had to track down who had paid and where those funds were supposed to go for our lease sites, for this property. So, the request action is record real property sale of mountain site to Chinook Silva LLC and Forest Management, name change to Manulife Investment Management Forest Management Incorporated.
Move to record the real property sale of mountain site to Chinook Silva LLC and Forest Management, name change to Manulife Investment Management Forest Management Inc.
Second.
Discussion? Discussion with the audience? All favor?
Aye.
Three S, request approval of family group for family tree.
Thank you, Mr. Reed.
Thomas.
For Mr. Lightford? Nice to see you again. Morning Commissioners, how are you?
Very well.
You doing great. Uh, so the courts are requesting approval of signature for a cash grant agreement, the amount of twenty-one thousand, seven hundred and fifty-two dollars. That amount is going to be dispersed roughly about eighteen thousand to cover drug testing costs, three thousand dollars just as some housing for participants winter this program, and around seven hundred and fifty-two dollars for participants in courts.
I move we approve grant agreement number SCP dash twenty-three dash zero nine and authorize Chair to sign. Second.
Discussion? If everybody has known, Thomas is the Court Administrator for Creuse County County Port System for Southern Court. Audience participation on this? Anybody? Are you there? All favor?
Aye. Thank you. Thanks, Thomas.
Three T, request approval of resolution making additional corporation for veterans.
So there was a little change, so I'm going to give you guys your congratulations.
Thank you.
We're getting more money than what was originally budgeted for.
All favor?
Thank you, Katie.
So this resolution is just accepting the money because we are getting more than what was budgeted and putting it to the expenditures. So we receive it and spend it.
Move to approve and sign resolution twenty-three zero nine one nine four B.
I second that.
Discussion?
Yes, there was mention here about a larger than normal carryover, but this is new money now, not a carryover of old.
So, some of it is, the beginning balance was projected wrong.
I see.
And then also we are getting more in the reimbursement.
Oh, this happens every week?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Any other discussion? Audience? Yes, sir, come on in.
Thank you for letting me speak, Commissioners. What I'd like to compliment the county on taking care of these people.
Sir, name and general.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm Tim Pierce from Seven Devils, abandoned there. And I want to compliment you guys on doing this, but you know, this is a gross lie by the federal government. I'm a veteran of Vietnam, sixty-seven, sixty-eight. We were told if something happened to us, that the federal government would take care of us, and it breaks my heart to see this stuff going on like the tunnels to tower and wooded warrior things on TV. We should not be doing this for donations. This should be done from the federal government. They promised us this. They have lied to us. And I see these people, I walked with it without a scratch, you know? It's somebody that I consider a pretty darn good year in my life, but I see my brothers and sisters in arms that are damaged physically and mentally, and nobody's helping them. Look at all the homeless people, veterans. These are mentally ill people that need help. And, and you know, it's tough for a county to do this, but it would be mine. You know, the federal government promised us this. And I think somehow whether we need to go after them as Commissioners and as people, say, hey, you know, fulfill your promise to the people. Well, we put it on the line for everybody, and they should take care of us for doing it. Thank you.
I totally agree with you.
Yes, thank you.
Anybody else? You men, all favor?
Aye. Thank you, Katie.
Request approval for purchase servers, IP, Darris.
Good morning Commissioners, Darris with Alert Information Technology. I'm here this morning asking for approval to purchase four new servers from SHI. The quote is in the amount of forty-three thousand, four hundred and sixty-six dollars and forty cents. Or is that an A?
Eight.
Should put these on. The, the quoted amount is covered by the Omniop Partners Purchasing Agreement, so we're only required, if, if a qualifying purchasing agreement means we only have to get a single quote, it's the lowest price negotiated by the state. These servers, pretty much all of our, the servers that run the county operations are virtual servers that are housed on one of four servers. They're all at five years old or older, so it's time to replace them. Last year we got new storage to support this, and this year we're asking for the servers. This is a budgeted amount this year, so.
Approve the purchase, or move to approve the purchase of servers through SHI for forty-three thousand, four hundred and sixty-eight dollars and forty cents.
And I second that.
Discussion with the Board?
I think we had a discussion about moving the current hardware into emergency management space. Is that still something we're talking about?
Uh, well, no, not exactly. We, we talked about maybe using the old equipment at the Harris Building, but it looks like funding for repairs on that facility might be, might be difficult to get, so. Uh, this, this will get this going, and certainly we'll be looking in the future to what options are available to us and how we can best serve the county's resources.
So the intent of moving those old server, that old server hardware to the Harris Building was just to have, to have backup in case there was, you know, some.
Disaster recovery, yeah, something.
So, so the plan now, if we're not going to move those into the Harris, will be to just hold that hardware, hopefully to have a place to deploy it before it's completely useless?
I haven't put a bunch of thought into that because I've been working on some other projects. We certainly, it'll take us a couple of months to transition everything over. As we get closer to that, I'll be thinking more about that, but, but likely we will put them away and see what we can do in the future.
So you'll report back when you, you can decide to put those on standby?
Well, they, they certainly will go into storage, at least for a short term, and then, yeah. And then, yeah, we'll, we'll come together and decide whether we want to dispose of them or... I mean, they're five and six years old, so they're pretty old and parts are going to start failing. But, you know, we'll see what happens. I will let you know one way or the other.
Discussion. Discussion with the audience. All the favor?
Aye. Paul Darris is there. You want to do that now or do you want to wait until after we complete? Let's do that next.
Okay. I'd like to ask for board approval to present, or have Darris present a late, late agenda item. This is in regard to a lady whom we interviewed and would like to hire as the, as the fair office manager position. So I move that we ask to late, approve a late, late agenda item for that purpose.
Second. All the favor?
Aye.
So I'm here on behalf of Brad Bernard, the fair board chair who was unable to attend today. We're asking for approval to hire Lisa Dumire as the fair office manager. She's got extensive, extensive financial experience, which has kind of been a challenge in that office, working successfully with finance. So that's great experience for us. She currently works for a state agency. She's got an excellent track record of managing projects and people. She has agreed to accept the position at step three, no less than step three, which is a pretty significant pay cut for her current position. But she lives in Merrill Pointe and her focus is really to spend more time on her family. So we think this is a great fit for the fair office. We expect some, some pretty exciting things to happen this year.
Move to approve the hire of Lisa Dumire at step three of case scale 749 for the fair office manager position based on her experience and qualifications.
Sir?
Second.
Discussion.
Congratulations on finding somebody to fill that seat.
Yeah, we had a five-person, five, six-person board and it was unanimous. Everybody thought she was an excellent fit.
We had five people apply. Three were screened and approved for suggestion for interviews. The other three, Lisa stood out. The other, the other two were good, but she was really good. And she's local, she lives here now. She's ready to go to work.
Well, she needs to give her current employer.
I'll take a couple of weeks.
Appropriate amount of minutes. But she'll be here soon.
Discussion for the audience, anybody?
Aye. Thank you, Commissioner.
Moving on to item 3B. Request approval for contract for PIO, Public Information Officer. Thank you for your contribution.
Yeah, during our budget process, the board and budget committee talked about contracting with someone to help put out the word about all the things that the county does and some of the county problems along the way. And the board thought that was a good idea. We get lots of complaints about things we don't do, but we have actually done. We just haven't publicized them. Time and time again we have that happen. We just think it would be a good thing to be a little more transparent and have someone that's in charge of talking about what's going on to the, within the county, to the public as in general. We have a gentleman who's willing to do that on a six-month basis so that we can try this out. He would propose a twice monthly email newsletter, do, do press releases periodically. He would develop a stakeholder list for newsletter distribution and update it. And he would develop and update an electronic newsletter template using Constant Contact. He has served the county on the county budget committee. So he's very familiar with the county. I think our commissioners have met him. His proposal is for a six-month term of service, which can be extended if we wish. And that six months would cost $1,500 per month or $9,000 in total.
Move to approve contracting for a public information officer.
With this proposal?
With this proposal.
All right. I'll second that.
So if you don't have this, it would include regular updates on county activities, up-to-date stats, stories about county operations and successes and/or failure. Successes, schedules on upcoming meetings, featured employee month type things, job openings, both summaries of events that take place with the road department, the health department, sheriff's office, et cetera. Videos if applicable. Develop stakeholder lists. We try to use our template, use a constant contact. Just some of the things that he would be doing.
It occurs to me, we have before us here, a very valid concern about a bike campground that we're proposing in the area of the whiskey-run bike trails. Now, obviously people didn't know about that. But we've been talking about that for months. We've all known about it. We just haven't done a good job because we don't have a good way to communicate some of these things that we are contemplating but haven't really started, we haven't got too far down the road with. So I think this will be a great assistance and making, a great aid in making our county much more transparent than we've been able to be.
For me, I'm always surprised that people don't know about the proposed wind energy project by the Federal Bureau of Ocean Energy Management, known as Bone. Eighteen hundred square miles. I spent six hours on a webinar with Bone and all kinds of federal agencies, state agencies, et cetera. It is, it is, it doesn't seem good for us because, first of all, I read the other, last week, that the president is going to grant over a trillion dollars to these wind farm folks to help support their efforts, putting wind farms out all over the coast of the United States, east coast, west coast, Gulf, et cetera. Some of the things that Bone is not involved with and they have, quote, say nothing they have to do with it, but is an integral part of it, is they expect all of us to pay for the onshore upgrades for the transmission lines. That also, and it's talked about twice now in Oregon legislature, it has been enacted in Rhode Island and Virginia, which both have offshore wind. This thing is called feed-in tariff. It was acted by those respective legislatures in those two states, promoted by the manufacturers, the promoters, et cetera. This feed-in tariff says that if something goes wrong with a project, you and I, the rate payer, are going to have to pay the investor back in a billion dollar. And that's something a lot of people don't know right here in the county. Every time I talk to somebody, they go, what? That can't be. And so this is another means of getting the word out to tell people. In fact, on next Wednesday, the 27th, at four o'clock at Coos Bay Library, they're going, Bone is going to have a public meeting from four to six, by the way. But just one of the things that maybe we haven't done a good enough job getting the word out to all the folks. Can you imagine your power bill blowing up five, 10, 15, 20, depending on the length of payback? And I guess we all should invest in this thing because you can't lose, right? It just boggles my mind, this stuff that the feds are doing.
I think they're rejected.
Anyway, I'm kind of, a bit far off the subject, but as an example of trying to get the word out about what's going on and how it affects all of you, everybody in the county, as well as up and down the whole coast.
Yeah, I agree that this is, that's an issue that's a good example of why the PIO and the information that will flow from that position will be an enhancement for everybody to understand what's happening of import in the county. And just to tag on a little bit of what you said, Mr. Main. You know, it's appalling to me to think that, that anyone could conceive, this must be a great investment project because we need federal money to start it. No, if it was a good investment project, there would be money people lining up behind it to capitalize on all of the profit by putting in all of their own investment.
There is in China.
Yeah, that's right.
That's right. She's going to be putting it up.
Plenty of public involvement in China. But anyway, yeah, these, these units are manufactured in China. They're not recyclable. They assemble in California by Chinese. They will impose devastating effects on our wildlife, on our whales and our birds.
So if you don't know, these are proposed to be floating on huge barges or stanchions. They're going to be anchored to the seafloor, thousands of feet deep. And I asked about yesterday, when they got to come in, they said, well, how are you going to mitigate all of that or protect all of the sea life? Salmon? Is it going to be disrupted for the transmission lines? The energy that they get off, will it disrupt their homeing? Will it disrupt the whales? How many birds is it going to strike like it does on land? And several years ago, and I have this on tape at home, where Bone had, several years ago, was interviewing a person from the Audubon Society of Portland. And they asked if they had data on bird strikes in the ocean. The Audubon Society said, no, we don't. But those companies should just grow more birds, quote unquote.
Grow more birds?
And I'm thinking, that's cool. So why can't the timber companies grow more spotted owls and merlets and stuff? Oh, no, no, they can't do that one. It is amazing sometimes. Yes, sir. Come on in.
Yes, I'm Chris Lukey from Bandon. To get a...
Come on up here. See, the recorder doesn't.
We'll let you get by being in the back of the room.
I'm Chris Lukey from Bandon. I generally support the idea, but do we know, do other counties have a public information officer?
A lot.
Are we going with, in with that? That seems like a reasonable thing. I'd also encourage you to make use of the internet as much as you can to get the board out. Sometimes that's a little bit hard, so.
Yeah, as an example, I get about every few days I get something from各个县.
And then, yeah, and the video. We haven't even signed up for any of that. Yes. Good question.
Anybody else? Yes, sir. Rob? Okay, go ahead, Rob, and then the next person.
Yeah, who is this public information officer?
Rick Osborne.
Did you hear that? Name is Rick Osborne.
I'm sorry, what?
Rick Osborne.
Okay, thank you. My next question is, if you guys are going to be sending out newsletters, kind of similar to the newsletters that go out by the city of Coos Bay, the city of Coos Bay puts public service announcements by certain groups for certain events. But yet, they refuse to post other people's events that they don't ideologically agree with. So my question to you is, if you send out a newsletter, are you going to include public events? And are you going to include everyone's public event?
You know, that's something that hasn't come up. But from my viewpoint, this will be a county newsletter. Will you be using it to advertise or promote or de-promote other things?
Agreed, yeah. It'll be just for county discussion.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, come on in. And then Matt, you want to say something?
Jim Bennett, Bandon. You know, I might suggest that in order to realize the outreach that you were speaking of, we could just use the mail. You know, fund an effort to, if we want to enfranchise the people into decisions, local and keep it local, which is what we voted for, you know, I think just sending out a mailer might be, might be a good idea.
We can't send out, we can't send out a mailer for the same, I mean, nowhere near the same price as this. You know, that would be, that would be, actually, sending mail just to register voters in the county is about $15,000. That's a postcard. So, you know, an actual document would be more than that and it would probably end up costing eight or 10 times what this will cost.
Plus you have just the labor of holding and stuffing and sending it, everything.
Well, as we know, the burden of notification is on you guys. It's not on, on the people. We're just supposed to behave ourselves and pay our taxes, right?
Well, Jim, now come on.
No, 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 I understand it's costly. No, I get it. I understand. But, you know, every effort has to be made to let the people know what's going on. You've got a Rob Taylor Show, we've got the newspaper, we've got a Facebook page that's got, what is it, 35,000 subscribers? So every effort has to be made to let the people know about this highly impactful stuff.
Do you get the reports in the sheriff's office when they do arrests and things?
In what form would that be?
It comes over your email. Or you do sign up at the sheriff's office and they send it to you.
Well, there's one thing.
Probably one to three a day where they need arrests or they tell you what happened with all those arrests.
Okay.
When they go through the court system.
Okay.
It's very.
Well, that's well taken. I don't know, belongs in the same breath with this, this type of big stuff.
And they send it to all the media too, society individuals?
Okay.
So we would send it to all media too?
Well, all I know is we didn't, well, I won't get into the bike camp stuff here. But at any rate, this, this windmill stuff. You know, we have to understand that this illegitimate regime engages in what I call societal sabotage. So you can't use common sense, an assumption of goodwill, or anything you were taught in civics class. You can't get there from here. As you know, you just get a edict. So, you know, this is the part of our ongoing where we have to learn to say no. No.
Morning Commissioners, Matt Will links. The PIO thing is kind of brought to mind, something I had been thinking about recently. I'm in favor of the PIO. I mean, I'm with him too. I mean, we need to keep people as well informed as possible. It brought to mind what you were just talking about, the stuff that the sheriff's been sending out. As you all know, I run the Coos County Neighborhood Watch Facebook page. We reshare the sheriff's announcements constantly. I mean, like you said, two, three times a day, sometimes it's good information. But I realized something, reading all those, primarily, you know, arrest reports and stuff like that. Sometimes people who are arrested didn't do anything wrong. And that's later found out when the DA drops charges, things like that. I've been naming specific cases, but there's been a few where charges were later dropped and it popped into my mind that those people's names were trucked through the mud. The Oregon Legislature, I believe, passed the law a few years ago where you couldn't release booking photos because the person hadn't been convicted yet. I'm kind of either way on that. There's positives and negatives. But these press releases, I'm not saying we shouldn't do the press releases when an arrest is made. But I'd also suggest that maybe the district attorney's office should have their own PIO. And if a press release has been made by the sheriff of an arrest where those charges are later dropped, then maybe a company, accompanying press release should be made to clarify that, hey, this person, that all those charges were dropped, you know, as to not drag their hand through the mud. So just as a question.
Anybody else about this? Anybody else about this?
Aye.
3W requests cruel resolution rejection of constitutional state and federal mandates.
This is an agenda item that has been placed on the regular agenda. A few weeks ago, we passed this as a late, late agenda item. That was a technical mistake because, unknown to me at that time, late, late agenda items require unanimous vote to consider the late, late, and then unanimous to approve as well. And we have the former, but not the latter in this case, and so we presented it again today. Coos County businesses and individuals suffered great harm due to illegal, unconstitutional mandates from state and federal government agencies in 2020, 2021, and 2022, and the damage is not yet even fully assessed. People in Coos County must have their individual rights and freedoms preserved. If state and federal elected servants will not stand against tyranny, then county-level elected servants, the commissioners, must do so. Consequently, I moved to pass and sign the resolution in the matter of proclaiming Coos County's rejection of unscientific mask mandates, closures, or restrictions related to respiratory or other diseases, and reconfirming personal freedoms.
Okay, you have a second. Second for discussion, and I imagine there's lots of people who want to discuss it. Discussion by the board? John?
I appreciate the fact that you're bringing this back and doing it in an appropriate way. I understand you're new here, you didn't know what these restrictions were on late, late agenda items. I would add one thing to the thing, to what you said, and that was, they were, we came up with the idea of allowing last-minute additions to the agenda for items that would not be controversial, as this most certainly is. And I'll give you an example of how it... Or timeliness was an important item. Let's say that we had approved purchase of a piece of equipment by the road department during budget process, and that they said they were gonna need $15,000 to do that, and that's in the budget. And an opportunity comes up to buy the same thing for $10,000, but it can't be held for under two weeks because someone else will likely pick it up. So it was that type of thing. It's kind of a cut-and-dry, common sense event that we shouldn't waste $5,000 by not discussing it in a timely basis. Not something as, as big as this is and as controversial as, as this is. And so I just want to add that to, to the late, late agenda item criteria. So that what happened last time was because people, other than people that knew it was going to come up, and there were some who knew that we're gonna have a, this late, late agenda item, they were able to be here, and because they, by and large, supported it, they were able to speak and support it. Because it didn't go out with a budget package ahead of the time, ahead of the meeting, other people who might have been interested in it were not able to be here and attend and have their, their input known. So I thank you, Rod, for resubmitting this. I think it's now time to consider it.
Yeah, thank you for that, John, and the reason, I just want to clarify in this public forum that the reason for introducing this as a late, late agenda item last time had nothing to do with a tricky strategy or anything like that. It wasn't, it wasn't intended to keep the discussion from happening. It was because I felt that there was an impending threat of that at the time. Hasn't come to fruition since then, so my assessment at that time even stayed. But anyway, happy to have it on the open agenda here, so.
Okay, so public participation. Mr. Phil Thompson, first. I imagine there's more.
Phil Thompson, Coos Bay. This goes back to the August 29th meeting. And Rod, I heard your explanation to Mr. Taylor on the radio yesterday. And what I was sitting here, my interpretation of everything went down different. You guys did submit this resolution about the public knowing, and you also violated your own policy by putting it up there because of late, late agenda item. Mr. Sweet explained to both of you, and I know Bob knew what it was. So why don't we just come clean and say, hey, hit back for our notice, because that's what you guys are doing. You try to pass something that really you didn't have the right to do. We can't supersede the state with any ordinance or anything you're doing. And the people that advocate on a resolution like this, what about the people that wanted to wear masks and stuff? Bob did want to wear a mask, so he got disciplined or whatever by OSHA. There's no use trying to change how the county works. Everybody in this county should have to obey what the mandates or the law says until the courts disprove. You don't have that right to make something that says, I can't get a shot, or I don't have a shot, or anything like this, or wear a mask. That's not you guys' business to sit there and try to tell the rest of the county what they can or can't do. Now, I'm done.
Thank you for that, Phil. I'm gonna take the opportunity to respond to some of your comments, please. First of all, you, you cannot possibly know the thoughts of my mind or intent of my heart, which you just alluded to. And the second thing is, nowhere in this resolution does it say that nobody can wear a mask if they want to, or go get a COVID injection if they want to. This is intended to say that when the governor, unconstitutionally, as she did in 2020, he digs, he digs a mandate to close the restaurants, to close the businesses, to close the hardware stores, and yet Home Depot and Fred Meyer and Walmart can stay open, and the marijuana shops and the liquor stores, that, that all businesses should have equal rights to stay open in those circumstances. That every person has the right to decide whether or not to put a medical device on their face contrary to, to indications in multiple studies that demonstrate the ineffectiveness of that. And so, Rod, there's nothing here telling you what you can and cannot do, Phil.
Now, may I answer you? You made the resolution. Now, you tell me what it was made for, if it wasn't the stop what went on before. You don't have the right to interpret the mandates. We've got attorneys and judges and stuff besides what's lawful. You don't have the right to say it's unconstitutional. Now, you just don't have that, guys, and this is my whole problem.
Excuse me just a second, Phil. I hate to interrupt you, but everyone in the audience, if I can hear you mutter from up here while someone else is trying to present their views, whether it be a commissioner, legal counsel, or another person in the audience, I'm gonna ask you to leave. I don't have that right, but I'm gonna ask you to leave. Because that is rude. We can have a reasonable discussion. We should be able to have that without people oohing and aahing and booing and moaning and everything else. That is childlike, irresponsible behavior. Let's act like citizens in a democracy here, please.
That's clear versus the Republican.
Whatever it is, the thing.
Yeah, well, whatever it is.
My point is, your education with that thing for people, you guys are making it, it's almost legal. And then if you, somebody died or something because they're gonna listen to you guys' resolution or something, then the county could be at fault. You guys are supposed to be nonpartisan. And I know Bob is a Republican or a Democrat, but he can still be nonpartisan. You guys, you guys screwed up last, last meeting, and you knew it. You can't come in here now and say you did, because I heard John tell you about it, right? And I know Bob knows about the late, late agenda item. And yes, I think, my own personal opinion, I think you guys have tried to slip it over onto the public. And thank you.
Who's next? Matt? We're gonna go through the lines. There's about a three-minute time limit, so try and make it brief, and don't repeat what other people have said.
Matt Wilk, excuse me, sorry, I probably jumped in front of a couple people. Me and Phil are usually on the same page, but the simple fact is, this country wouldn't exist if we just did what people told us. Sometimes you have to go against the grain. I'm not gonna jump in Rod's heart and make an assumption. There's politicians out there that have a track record lying to their people he doesn't. So I'm not gonna make that assumption. Phil's welcome to make that assumption if he wants to. But the simple fact of the matter is, the resolution is not telling people what to do. There's no risk of, oh, somebody died because they followed your resolution. The resolution is saying the state, the county, does not have the authority to force you to act in a certain manner, or to use county resources to force you to act in a certain manner. There is nothing in the resolution stopping you from getting a jab. There's nothing in the resolution stopping you from wearing a mask. There's nothing in the resolution stopping you from social distancing if you feel that's the correct thing to do. The simplified matter is, there's a certain group of people in here that want to tell other people what to do when they're not provably sick and they're not provably infecting anyone else. This isn't, isn't a matter of me having, knowing, knowing that I have AIDS, and then having sex with somebody and not telling them that I have AIDS, and then getting AIDS. You could be charged under those circumstances. There's laws against that in most states in this country. It's not the same thing because you might have COVID. Nobody knows if you're infectious or not. There's nothing in this that's requiring people who act in a certain way, they would put any liability on the county. I'm sorry, Phil's interpretation is completely wrong.
Who's next? From the front. You're in the front. And then the gentleman back there, you live after that.
You know, if you work for a company, or you're playing pickleball, or you're playing golf, or you're playing public servant, there's a rulebook. And as Americans, we have a rulebook. It's very simple. We made everything complicated. It's called the Constitution, and it is rooted in the individual. It's not rooted in mob rule or the great good or any of that stuff. I saw a poll, and I can't remember the source, that said that 91% of Americans did not intend to go along with round two in terms of lockdowns and mandates. And as we know, 70% in political circles is like a landslide, right? I could blow up your emails, and I'm glad to do it, with peer-reviewed studies showing that masks are ineffective, that these bioweapon jabs are, to call them ineffective would be an understatement. And I could blow up your email with peer-reviewed studies saying that not only are the masks useless, they're very detrimental. So, and I'm glad to do it, you know, on request. So I appreciate you honoring your oath, and I'm very glad that you presented this, this resolution. Thank you.
Gentlemen in the red vector. And the lady next to her would agree.
I'm Chris Lukey from Bandon, and I object to this resolution. And I'm offended that the commission would suggest that we pass a resolution that means that we would disobey the laws and rules of the state of Oregon. That, to me, is not what we do. We have to follow the rule of law. And some of those laws and rules are state laws. The county doesn't supersede the state, and that's my, my biggest concern. The other concern is that Coos County has a lot of senior citizens. I'm one of them. And we depend on the public health administrators and professionals in that area to help keep us safe. And they're using the best science that's available. And I, I feel like that the commission is going against that ability of public health individuals to do their job. And that's what, the way I see it. Thank you.
Thank you. Would you agree? Would you agree, and then you were next?
Let's please hold the applause. We want to hear, we want to weigh every input on the basis of it, not on the basis of the crowd's reaction.
My name is Natalie Reifler, and I come from New York City. I think one, one of my problems with the resolution is everything that is put out as fact, but there is no telling where these facts were gained. And I mean, it's, it's like, peer review shows that, that masks are not effective, yet other studies show that masks are very effective. And your ventilators are causing the deaths of many thousands. It's the disease that the person is being put on the ventilator for that is causing the death of that person, not the ventilator. And I just, I just feel like by putting out all of these facts, that, that you, you're basically stating falsehoods, unless you can say where these facts were found. And I mean, the fact remains, yes, I believe it. You perhaps do not. But in a population of 336 million, there were 103 million cases of COVID. And, and of these, 1,127,000 people died. In Oregon, of a population of 4.2 million, 910,000 people developed COVID, and 8,726 died. And that, that, you may, you may say that, that your morbidity is less than 1%, but, but it's still, 103 million people died. And in Oregon, 8,700 people died. In Coos County, of 65,000, we had 15,000 reported cases. That's 31% of our population here, and 200 people died, two of whom were my friends, and I miss them. And I, I don't, I just do not like what is happening here. And also, the state and the Coos County will take legal action against future unconstitutional mandates from state and federal governments. That's, who decides them? And, and who decides whether or not you have the right, I assume, to, to, to take legal action against them? It's, you're, you're biting off more than you can chew, and you're not representing a whole lot of the people by saying that. So I would wish you would consider it.
Thank you, ma'am. The lady there in the blue?
In the meantime, I do have a comment about statistics. It's true that a lot of people died in 2020, and 2021, and 2022. But if you look at the overall death statistics nationwide, there is no, there's, there's a very miniscule variance, less than 1% of the total deaths in the nation, okay? So not only that, you also, you also have a, an absolute disappearance of the regular seasonal flu during those years. If you look at the historical statistic, the flu completely disappeared while COVID took this huge surge. So it's very suspicious, but the most telling thing to me is, is the continuity of the, of the death, total death statistic for all causes.
Okay. Gentlemen, thank you. Bianca Williams, Coos Bay, Oregon. I originally came here today for other reasons. I didn't even know this was going to be brought up, but I just wanted to say that I appreciate it and that I'm in support of the resolution. I am the wife of a veteran who took an oath that he was willing to die for his country to uphold the Constitution. And he still is very much indebted to this day. Very patriotic man. He and I both have chosen a life of public service. COVID was definitely a controversial and difficult time in the country to go through, but I appreciate Commissioner Taylor and me for bringing this up because it does feel every day like it's becoming a challenge to even keep up with knowing what rights are being infringed upon. Freedom is very important to me as a person who works in mental health and has done so for the last 20 years. These mask mandates were incredibly difficult for us to work with our clients. We were not able to read body language. We lost thousands of dollars as a result of it. It provided opportunities for those of us, some of us actually were not even able to work as a result of it. My family was directly affected. And because now we are learning evidence that these masks, which were masks produced in China, there have been multiple studies about how they are causing cancer and that they're filled with chemicals that are dangerous. I do not want to return to a time where fortunately now I am an independent businesswoman, but when I was working for an organization where this was infringed upon me, I was actually forced to work in an office away from the rest of the staff for other reasons, which I will not go into here. But I had to have a barrier. I had to wear a mask. I have asthma. I was forced to wear that mask eight hours a day while I was at my job or longer if I was in communication or contact with anyone else. It was a terrible time and I just thank you for looking out for the people. We, the people, we do have rights. And I don't believe the Constitution is something that we can debate. It is what it is and there are some of us that are willing to die to uphold that. So, thank you.
Thank you. The lady right there in the white.
And again, I thank you for doing what you're trying to accomplish because the way I understand it, you're just allowing those of us who prefer to not have that on our faces to live that way. And back, I forgot I had this in my purse, but one of the first boxes that I purchased to comply back in 2021, it has a warning on it. And I just wanted to tell you guys that it was on the first boxes. Warning, this product is an air-lit mask. This product is not a respirator and will not provide any protection against COVID-19, coronavirus, or other viruses or contaminants. That was what we were told we had to wear. This is a copy of what was on that box. I didn't make this. The manufacturer made this. It doesn't stop the coronavirus. I thank you for allowing those of us who prefer not to put that on to not. And if you do want to, you can. It's not, it's not prohibiting anybody. It is allowing us to make those choices as individuals. I just want to say thank you again.
You guys, the gentleman there? Yeah, come on in.
Dave Kierzmann in Oregon. Well, a couple of things here. If your masks work well, why are these people so worried about other people not wearing the mask? I mean, everybody that wants to believe in the mask does fine, but if you believe the mask works, that's fine, but if this works, then why are you worried about somebody else not wearing the mask? The mask was supposed to stop the boogeyman from getting you, right? I've never heard of such a thing, just like the shot, the same thing. In order to bring my shot to work, you have to get the shot too. Did that, is that why the polio shot worked?
No, sir.
No. This is the first time anything like this has happened. And another thing, I was trained a little bit before I went to the playground of the world, I was on a sack base and we used to play games in the world of NBC, nuclear, biological and chemical warfare. And the old sergeant charge used to say, if you can smell anything through your mask, it is not working. So if you want to wear a mask, fine, but just remember, if you believe in it that much, why are you worried about somebody not wearing one? Thank you.
Richard? And then the, the woman.
I know. It's got getting geared up.
Fully undersaid that one. Morning, Richard.
Morning. Gentlemen, you do not have the right or the authority to start issuing resolutions, reportedly speaking for the people of Coos County, excuse me, about items that could later cost us in illegal fees. That's not to mention the rather sleazy, underhanded, unethical way that this whole resolution was brought up and passed. You guys were elected to see that the business of Coos County, all the departments, agencies and offices perform the work that is necessary to keep this county running. One of those agencies is the Health Department. And issuing a resolution that is full of misinformation and bogus science is, that affects the health of the, possibly affects the health of the county and is not living up to your responsibilities. You were not elected to propagate radical right wing propaganda and inflict it on our county. You were elected to, you know, I would like for you guys to continue doing the work you're doing to keep our county running. We don't need to have some sort of resolution that's beyond your authority and is bogus. Thank you.
The lady right there.
Good morning. My name is Sandra Heisman and I live in Bandit, Oregon. I wasn't going to talk today, but I wanted to just say something about vaccinations. I'm wondering how many people in this room have had the polio vaccination, smallpox vaccination, okay? The, you know, the moms and, you know, children are not allowed to attend public school if they have not been vaccinated. So this-
Mandate for those who do not. Can I ask our city council attorney about a mandate? Is a mandate a law? Or is it, are you free to follow or not follow the mandate? Legally?
Okay, I'm county council.
Oh, county.
Please, county. A mandate, without more information, hard to know exactly the answer to your question. But I'm probably referring to a state or federal law or administrative rule.
No, no, I'm, I'm, I'm mandate, the word mandate.
Right.
Mandated. Does that mean it's legal or illegal to follow them? Is it not correct that you have the opportunity to follow it if you want to, and then it becomes law for you?
I would say a mandate is mandatory, that's for sure.
Right, which means you can't follow it.
You'll probably have to do some research to get back to this.
Okay.
Maybe next week.
Maybe you know what I'm talking about.
Okay, thank you. Who's next? Uh, that's maybe better. Did you want to say something?
Me, yeah. Sure, I'm going, please. If I can walk.
Let's take a walk.
Yeah.
My name is Nancy Brown. I live in Coos Bay. And I agree with the resolution that you guys did. I do believe that if you want to wear a mask, and you want to get a shot, and you want to get the 15 boosters, whatever, fine, do it. But don't force the rest of us to do it. Being unconstitutional. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else on the bench? Stay along. Okay, moving across here. Beautiful. Come on up.
Good morning. Hello. Question for Rob. Are you saying that Coos County doesn't have to follow state laws?
So, no, I am not saying that at all. The mask mandate was not a law. It was never passed by the legislature. A law is proposed in the legislature and then signed by the governor. It's proposed and then passed in the legislature, and then signed by the governor. That's a law. Okay? When the, when the governor says, oh, hey, uh, uh, Board of Health, tell everybody to put on a mask, and OSHA, go shut down all the restaurants who are letting people come into their establishment that's not wearing a mask on their face. That's not a law. That's a mandate. And there's a huge difference between those. So, there's a constitutionally defined process in our representative republic in order to pass laws. And that process was not followed in this case. It was a mandate, an edict that was issued by the governor. That's unconstitutional. That's my argument.
No, it's not.
Well, something like a state law.
It's nothing like a state law. A law is proposed in the legislature by a legislator. It is passed in the legislature. It is signed by the governor. That is a law.
Okay. Well, through a lot of facts today, and a lot of alternate facts, and interesting, thank you.
Yes, thank you for your comments.
Next, David. Come on in.
Everyone will have a turn. I can assure you of that.
Yep.
We're here for the duration.
Yep.
Good morning, commissioners. My name is David Jennings. I live here in Cooke Hill. I appreciate that this has been brought up again. I still think, though, that this process is flawed. It didn't even have a cover sheet on the resolution. And I'm really not sure how many people were aware that this was happening. Because people, I think, were interested and had been told that you'd already passed it. Now, this is one of these situations where I think you have to decide when you're a layperson, and I think most of us are. There's some people that are very knowledgeable about health, about who has credibility. One of the things that I've found in my life, especially in the 28 and a half years that I worked for the county in juvenile detention, is that you needed to follow what healthcare professionals advise you to do, especially public health people, because they tended to know their business. I realize that sometimes can be wrong. But I think if you look at this resolution, especially all the wherasses, the bulk of everything that says in there is way outside the mainstream of medical authority. And I just don't find it to be trustworthy or credible. Other people, I guess, have to make their own decision. Many, many years ago, my older cousin Randy died of polio before the developed polio vaccine. Vaccines and other public measures have saved millions and millions of lives, and it really helped people. So, I don't know what to say about this. But again, I think the, the resolution itself is highly divisive and is highly flawed. It's highly unscientific. There's an infectious disease specialist at Baylor University, who had both a medical degree and a PhD, who's written a new book called, The Rise of Anti-Science, that talks about the kind of dangerous implications of people basically rejecting public health measures and relying on information that's incorrect. And I think this resolution does that. As far as the legal arguments, I don't know what to tell you. As far as I know, Governor Brown's mandates were never declared unconstitutional by any competent court in this state. But the case law at the federal level, even though there's been some clipping at some of the mandates, still basically says that the government has, under certain emergency conditions, the right to order health measures, including vaccinations. There's that case of Jacobson versus the Commonwealth in Massachusetts from the turn of the 20th century that affirms that. This is obviously a complex issue. You're not going to resolve all of it. But I would urge you to reject this divisive and unscientific mandate. And I think if you adopt it, you're really harming the credibility of the county. I think to some degree, you're pacing county employees at risk if for nothing else. It certainly inhibits employees that may feel they have an unsafe working condition in the county. And yet, they know the county commissioners, if you pass this, don't approve of them, basically complaining about this to state OSHA and asking them to enforce their safety regulations. That's just one example of this. This has a lot of implications. I don't think it's adequately vetted. If you're just thinking of doing something like this seriously that had credibility, I think you ought to hear from a whole bunch of healthcare professionals on all sides of the issues. And I think you ought to do some legal research on it. Think the measure is followed. And again, I urge you to reject it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, David.
Who's next? Frances?
I'm Frances Smith from Coos Bay. I was the public health administrator for Coos County for over 12 years. I have written a lot of public health policies, and I have enforced public health laws to protect the people in this county. So, I know a lot about public health. I would encourage you to reject this resolution. As has been pointed out, it has a lot of false information. I'm not going to go over the details on that. But I think if I had my name attached to a document, a public document, that had this many errors in it, false information, it would be an embarrassment. My second point is about public health restrictions. There are four public health measures that have been used worldwide to effectively control many disease outbreaks. The first is isolation, quarantine, social distancing. There are public health laws in the statutes about quarantine, for example. The second is personal protection. Masks, gloves, disinfection, hand washing. The third is vaccines. The fourth is medications. Now, what do you do when there is a new disease and there's no vaccination and there's no medication? What are you going to do to keep people from dying? Which gets to my third point. You're talking about some very ambiguous things here. And it's already been discussed about whether these are constitutional or legal. But let's say we get a new disease that is got a 50% mortality rate for children. In other words, half the children that get it are dying. There's no vaccine for this disease? There's no medication? Are you saying that you're not going to follow public health laws, which will restrict some personal freedoms in order to keep people from dying? Let's not forget that many of us are here well, alive today because of public health restrictions that protected them from COVID. So, if you get a new disease, and in this resolution, you're including diseases. I don't know what's coming down the road. What you're saying that you're going to do is file lawsuits. You're not saying what you're going to do to protect the people. You may have lawsuits filed against the county by parents whose children would die because you didn't do the job to protect the health. You didn't do your job to put in place the restrictions that would protect the health of their children. Are these restrictions popular? Absolutely not. Are they going to restrict our personal freedoms? Yes. Are they going to keep people from dying? Hopefully. So, whenever there is a public health emergency, another pandemic, there will be incident command system setup. You will have the opportunity, as public officials, to work with the public health officials, to discuss, to decide what to do. You don't need to have this resolution. I would encourage you to not adopt this ambiguous resolution that has a lot of misinformation. You don't know what the future's going to bring. Don't box yourself in with this.
Anybody else? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Renee Mentons. I'm from Coos Bay. And I strongly urge you not to support this resolution. I am a registered nurse, and I have been for over 35 years. I've worked in acute care, community settings. I've taught nursing students. There's three areas of this resolution that really are concerning to me.
Could you speak up, please?
There are three areas of the resolution that are concerning to me. One of them has to do with the first wherass about flu influenza gas, although that's generally correct. One of the things that was identified is that as the, with the range of COVID-19 mitigation measures, such washing hands, wearing masks, school closures, bans on mass gatherings, stay-at-home orders, social distancing, the flu did, uh, didn't, it wasn't as high as it had been in the past. But as soon as those were lifted, the flu came up based on testing and samples. And the flu season was longer that year. So, it didn't go away. It was just reduced because of some of the measures that were put into place around COVID. The second issue is that where as it says, scientific evidence and peer-reviewed studies show the masks are not effective. There are studies that show masks have been very effective. The type of mask, how the masks are worn. If you wear it under your nose, it's not going to work. If you have surgical masks, they're better than cloth masks, but N95 masks are better than any of them. An overall well-fitting mask during periods of high transmission can reduce transmission of disease. And I have research that shows that. An article recently indicates that widespread use of high-quality well-fitting masks during times of high transmission slows transmission and reduces the spread of disease. Information about COVID-19 vaccines that are in this resolution is not correct. There have been some side effects to this vaccine, but very few, and they're very rare. Adipalaxis, allergic reaction. Five cases in a million doses have been reported. Stroke or thrombosis. Four cases in a million doses have been reported. Myocarditis and pericarditis in males after the second COVID vaccine. Seventy per a million doses have been reported. And in females, eight have been reported. And this is information from the CDC and the morbidity and mortality weekly report. The other issue about neurological side effects, that the number of reported patients with any of these complications is far too low for the total number of people vaccinated. So, again, very rare kinds of complications. Vaccines are continually tested, as has been the COVID vaccine. Over 38,000 people in Coos County were vaccinated, and 83% of them were age 65 and older. And if there had been increased side effects, the vaccine would have been pulled from use. This has not been the case with the COVID vaccinations. My concern is that information given to the residents of Coos County be truthful, accurate, and provide opportunities for discussion. I do support people taking it on themselves to mask when in public if they are sick with any respiratory virus. Preferably, they stay home until the symptoms are gone. Washing hands, wearing masks, social distancing, and careful attention to public health recommendations will ensure that Coos County residents remain able to work and play without spreading respiratory diseases like colds, flu, COVID-19, or other illnesses we may not even know about now. Public health mitigation measures, such as mask-wearing and vaccination, have been researched. These measures have shown effective in reducing the incidence severity of disease. Many people currently wear masks if they are sick or if they want to prevent others from getting sick. For these reasons, I ask you not to sign this resolution.
Who else wants to talk? Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Sandra Cullen Ward from Vanden. And I just want to say something about the masks. As I recall, the institution of use of the masks was to protect others and not to protect ourselves. It was to keep us from coughing, sneezing, water droplets out into the air. Do you think the surgeons and nurses, when they perform surgery, wear masks to protect themselves or to protect you? Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I would like to speak.
Hang on, Rob. There's a lady coming up. Okay.
My name is Julie Knight. I live in Cooke Hill. Former BMS with ambulance and fire. Whether you believe in the science, disbelieve in the science, you have to believe in our medical facility here in Coos County is limited. And if you don't help protect people, it's going to affect the care of people who actually need for other reasons. It's going, could impact the hospitals in a very unhealthy way. So, please reconsider. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else, Rob? Rob Taylor on the Internet. Rob?
Yeah, I just want to comment to your authority. But I first want to say, when people are talking about science, they say, follow the science. And you follow the science, and the experts disagree with each other on this. And then they tell you, well, you can't pass this mandate because it's not legal. But then you listen to the different legal experts, and they disagree on this. And these are the experts in science and in law who cannot come together on this. And that's why you have to pass this resolution to challenge both the science and the legal authority. We had, in this state, was the first state to challenge federal law on immigration law. We were a sanctuary county where the state went against federal law. It started with smaller counties who passed themselves, and cities, who passed themselves as sanctuary cities, as sanctuary counties. And then it went on to the state. And still, to this day, federal law doesn't recognize these sanctuary cities or states, but yet they exist. And they're able to do exactly what the resolution against the governor's mandates that you're trying to pass does. And that allows the county to decide not to enforce these laws, which really doesn't matter because it wasn't the county enforcing COVID restrictions in the first place. So, other than a symbolic statement against the mandate, this really isn't going to change anything. And the only thing it does is gives us a little bit of ability to challenge the legality of the mandate. Once again, we are, have a state where we have legalized marijuana. That started with cities and counties who legalized marijuana. And yet, it was against state law until the state legalized it. And now, the state is living against federal law. And so, until you challenge these things, you will never know if it's legal or not. I myself have actually created law. I have created law in this county. We passed the Second Amendment preservation ordinance in this county. That law was challenged several different times in the courts. And the judges themselves have contradicted themselves. Even the experts have contradicted themselves. And that's why I support this resolution. Because I think the majority of the county, if they hadn't had this question on the ballot, they would support their right of choice to choose whether to get the jab or whether or not to get the jab. Whether to wear a mask or whether or not to wear a mask. Whether to continue doing business because you have a radical or not to do business. And we're not trying to take away anyone's choice. We're just trying to have everyone have a choice, including the people who don't want to wear the mask. And like it's been said before, if these things are effective and you're using them, you shouldn't worry about the people who are not using them. And that is exactly why we must pass this resolution. And I think the commission ordered not.
Okay, anybody else on the Internet?
Thank you.
Yep.
Everybody else in the audience?
Yep.
Yes? Dino, please come on.
Someone online there.
Okay. Really, you'll be after Dino?
I'll wait, I have a part.
Okay.
I'm Dino Van den.
Okay.
Apparently, I'm statistic. My wife died from COVID. And no matter what preventative protections that were administered, didn't work. I took care of her at home for four days after we found out she had COVID. They wanted to administer her right away. I didn't like what was happening in the hospitals. Our local hospital locked down. You can't see, you can't talk to, you can't do anything. While Lanell was there, yeah. I got COVID from Lanell. We both had the infusion done over in Roosburg. In my case, the only symptom I had was I couldn't taste hot sauce. And that was it. Lanell's case, her oxygen level dropped, saturation level dropped to a point where I did have to put her in a hospital. I took her back up to North Bend, administered her. That's the last time I really saw her. It was very upsetting. We, we couldn't communicate. But Lanell, she had her cell phone. She photographed, taped conversations, the doctors and everything. And it was mass confusion. It's like they didn't know what to do. And they were experimenting on her, I truly believe, with different drugs. She had signed a form when we went in that she's very allergic, which would have been a death sentence had they injected her with various types of drugs. One would have been the COVID shot. That would have killed her. Rendezimvir. They wanted to use that on her right away. I'm not sure that once she was in there and under their control, they did what they wanted to do to her. Because I truly believe they were so confused, they didn't know what they were doing. At least on the videos I got. Which I would like to make public one of these days, but not the time. I'm living with an absence of my wife. Masks, no mask. Wash your hands, don't wash your hands. She went down to San Diego. She was a part of the design concern. And when she came back, she said she didn't feel good. That was on Friday, Monday, we found out she had COVID. Who knows what she was around? Could have been, I believe, droplets from maybe sick people in the area that she was at. And it was very crowded down south. But it's really sad that, well, I believe that we should have the say of what you're going to do to my body, even if it means covering your face. I believe that didn't do anything. And it's really sad to see that people are using masks on and off, on and off, on and off. And they'll wear it for a week. I believe that those masks were designed to keep them from spreading COVID to us. Not too much receiving. I would like this to go forward. That's it.
Thank you, David.
Thank you.
If somebody online wants to speak?
Yeah, ready to meet.
Hi, I'm Riley Cousins of Coos County. And I do not support this resolution. I believe that the COVID-19 was a, and remains a public health emergency. Virus is spread through droplets and other means. I mean, that is why I do rely on the badge. I went to the John Hopskin site and the Mayo Clinic. And there's a lot of boxes. And many of those are in this resolution. I believe this is beyond the, where the commissioners should be working. This is definitely out of bounds. I think it's a lot of misinformation. And I do support what has been said by the public health officials. They have had the vaccine information. They have been researching it, you know, for decades. It did not come quickly, or people may have thought so. It has been researched for many decades. And, you know, that's what you do. Is you have a public health emergency, you know, isolate, distance, vaccine. Thank God. And there's going to be another one coming up. That's why we do the flu vaccine. And people didn't get flu a lot of times because they were masking and they were isolated. So, there's a lot of misinformation. And so, bottom line, I don't support this resolution. And I hope that my fellow citizens agree. And I certainly hope the commissioners do not object. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hensley?
Amy Hensley.
Amy Hensley, okay, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Amy Hensley. I'm the ASME Union Rep. I'm speaking against this resolution. The ASME members that work with the public in your county are currently the frontline workers. Last week, there were 24 COVID cases in your county. This week, it's jumped to 46, I believe, positive COVID cases. Rob, you mentioned that the flu almost disappeared during COVID. You realize this is a direct effect of people virtual distancing and wearing the masks. You were elected to protect the county and manage. Please don't adopt this resolution if you care about your county. That's it.
Anybody else? Yes, ma'am.
It's my understanding.
Come in. Wait, name and general.
Oh, my name is Elaine Langston. And I'm from Vanden. And I'm originally from Arizona. It's my understanding that people that do not wear masks sometimes don't know they have COVID. And if you are near them and you don't have a protection, which is what the mask is for you, then you can catch that COVID. And that's the whole point of wearing the mask. And I think it's very important when we're getting more COVID in our county that we should wear masks. And I think that this resolution is garbage. Excuse me. I think it should be stopped.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? In the back, where are you?
My name's Kurt Magnuson. I live in Coos Bay. And instead of just going just on the masks, to me, you're most, overall, And instead of just going just on the math, I'm, to me, your most overall, what you're supposed to be mostly looking for is finances, take care of the finances of this county. If you're going to generate lawsuits and be sued, how much money in the budget is for this? Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else who hasn't spoken yet? We have one repeat.
I, I don't want to seem like I'm picking on any one person. I am concerned about allowing repeats because everyone may have, want to, may want to respond to something else they heard after they testified. So I'll leave that up to the chair, but that, I'm saying probably no, but that's what, that's up to the chair.
I assure Commissioner Sweetfield.
All righty, anybody else that hasn't spoken yet on this subject? Anybody online? Okay, thank you all for your input. It's good to see everybody here, of course, and listen to everybody's opinion. At this point, we will take a vote. All favor of the resolution?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, thank you. Going on to, I need a motion for the consent.
I need approval of the consent calendar.
Second?
Aye. And I have another late, late question. Yes, I do. I said I had two.
Okay.
The second one is a matter of importance and moment. It has to do with appointing a, an appraiser to appraise the piece of property that was returned to the county. And we need to now do a, 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 a.
This meeting is not over, folks. You're welcome to leave, but please be quiet. If you want to discuss something, go out and then come back. Please, thank you. Go ahead, John.
Okay. It has to do with appointing an appraiser to appraise the property that was returned to the county by the Baloney void right recently. I move that we consider a late, late agenda item regarding that matter.
Second?
Aye. This is agenda. We sought bid request for three, from three different appraisal companies for this property that we newly become owner of. And no one responded. We contacted one of the three and Marano and Company and submitted an offer of $2,004, I think it was $2,450.
That's correct.
$2,450 to do the appraisal. And my motion would be to recommend we accept that, that bid.
Second, that motion. Okay, discussion. Apparently he was out of town and didn't respond.
He was out of town. But his D and D North Office responded. I just picked one at random.
Okay. Discussion by the audience. Anybody want to talk about this? No? All favor?
Aye.
All right. Commissioner, you first. Who wants to go first?
I'll go first. I'll keep it really short. It's been quite a while since our last meeting, so there's lots of, lots of meetings, lots of things all of us have done. But two things in particular that I'd like to talk about, the things that I did. And one was to testify before the Board of Forestry, who was considering a habitat management or habitat.
Conservation plan.
Habitat Conservation Plan, HCP, that would be imposed on the 600,000 acres of forest lands that they manage on behalf of the counties in Western Oregon. This Habitat Management Plan would take, end up taking 55% of those lands out of harvest and with very little environmental improvement that they could make sure that would occur because of what they're not going to harvest. In this time of high building costs, it seemed like not the appropriate thing to do. We need to drive the cost of building materials down. We don't do that by heavy down the force. We don't, we adversely impact building affordability, of course, particularly amongst those people whose jobs and livelihoods are at stake when these works are cut down. They more than, they certainly cannot afford a house. So I wanted to tell you that I testified against the Habitat Conservation Plan. The Board of Forestry is still considering their Habitat Conservation Plan. I believe it will go through, but I wanted you to know that I was against that. Yesterday, Rod and I attended a District Four meeting of the Association of Oregon Counties. That district is Coos, Curry, Douglas, and Josephine. It was a meeting where local people with local counties with common interests could talk about what we want to see done or not done at the next state legislature. It's a good process. One of the things that, that the four, well, I think only three of the four counties were there at the time. But they agreed that four counties should band together in another resolution, was it, that we had to protest the passage of Measure 110, which has made drug use illegal. And with, in most counties represented, it's been a disastrous result. Those are two things I wanted to report on and in the interest of sounding quiet down.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, yesterday's AOC District Four meeting was very good and was very encouraging to me as a, as a fledgling commissioner to see the, the alignment that was in the room in terms of how we think about the state's position and the federal government's position regarding timber and the, the lack of resources coming to our counties due to state federal regulations that have tritted the dollars that we used to receive as a county. That's why our property tax rates are so low, because this county used to run primarily on timber dollars and we had plenty of it, as did Curry, as did Josephine. We were all doing just dandy down there. So anyway, we, I felt very good about coming out of that meeting yesterday about the prospects moving forward with a coalition of counties that actually can take a stance that really means something at the state level. And this kind of speaks back to something that, that came up several times during today's discussion about our resolution. And that is about the will of the people. I, I have a very, a very good idea of what the general will of the people is. Having spent seven or eight months out there, going around and talking to people, not picking who I spoke with, we spoke to everybody. And, and spending four days at the fair last year, standing out there all day long, talking to people, all people, everybody who wanted to talk about something, that's what we were talking about. And I can tell this room and everybody listening that the fact is, the vast majority of people were vehemently opposed to the mask mandates, the lockdowns, all of the COVID provisions. And the longer it went on and the more people began to understand the scam that was happening to us all, the greater the opposition grew. So, you know, that was, that was part of the basis on which I was elected to this office because I made it very clear that I intend to stand up against unconstitutional mandates. I intend to stand up against a state encroaching on our personal rights and liberties here in Coos County. And that's why I was elected. People were thrilled to hear that. And, you know, all due respect to, to the other commissioners here today, the fact of the matter is that during the COVID mandates, this commission did not stand up as a commission for those rights as, as I just spoke to them. And, and now we have. So you have a right to do whatever you want to do, as long as you're not, you know, directly causing harm to somebody's person or property. And, you know, you, you know, you can have a different, a different perspective on what the science is, but that depends on what your information source is. Anyway, went out last week, looked at the tide gates out here in Winter Lake and gained a great understanding about how that system works, that system of flood irrigation using the incoming tide water to flood these fields out here in Winter Lake. And then the receding tide, that water is allowed to evacuate off the land. And it became, you've got a great understanding of, of why the water stayed as long as it did, created the mosquito problem that we've had. And so that was, I went out with Fred Messerly, formerly former county commissioner, to, to look at that. And he showed my wife and I the, the whole setup. There are a few of those evacuation culverts that are mounted too high, so the fields don't drain correctly. That's a money issue to go back and replace those, those culverts. And then the second problem was, of course, there was a new operator who left those gates open too long and let that water out there long enough for mosquitoes to be able to propagate. Well, what happened is the, the earth got saturated, so then the, the water didn't soak in, so then there's a place for those mosquitoes to hatch out. In addition, we just had a, a bad mosquito year. So this all compounded to create this profound problem that we've had. But it looks like we're probably a couple of weeks away from getting the end of that. So, so very excited about that. And, oh, and Commissioner Land Use Training took place in this very room last week. And I intended that to gain a better understanding of the way that the, the planning, zoning, and land use regulations come down. And really, my goal there is, is to again enhance the liberty that we all have to utilize our property in the way that we see fit. Now, that doesn't mean carte blanche, build everything you want anytime, anywhere. Obviously, we have to have some controls on that to, to manage the kind of growth that's happening in certain areas. But we do want to make sure that we have land use policies in place that, that allow people the, the liberty to live their lives, not in accordance with the tyrannical United Nations Agenda 2030, which is the origin of much of the planning, planning restrictions that we see today. So anyway, I'm keenly interested in that and the floor as well. I encourage you to please reach out to me, continue that conversation so that we can see how strategically we stand against that. And tomorrow, I'm out of here for the Association of Oregon Counties in Klamath County, Klamath Falls, who are having a, a meeting with the Legislative Committee, which I hope to get on, and some other topics as well. So a lot of stuff going on. Thank you all for being here today. I really appreciate the attendance in the room and all of the comments, pro and con. You know, we want to hear it all and have a reasoned discussion. So thank you all for that. Commissioner?
All righty. I talked about zero ocean energy management and the windmill project off the coast. A little bit more about that. It was supposed to produce 12.6 gigawatts. Then in their slide presentation yesterday, it was 10.6. They said that it takes nine to 10 cables per gigawatt on the ocean floor to bring that inland. So I said, is that 106 cables? Oh, no, 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 no. We've scaled that whole project back to less than a gigawatt. Well, wait a minute now, why do it in the first place if you're not going to get any energy out there in the first place? Come on. Other than you want all of the federal grants that are coming to support your company because nobody else will do it. Just my opinion. I said, wait a second here, people. This doesn't make any sense at all. You're going to disrupt the commercial traffic coming from the Far East, the chip ships, et cetera. You're going to disrupt fishing vessels. No crossing of this thing will be allowed from, basically, it starts basically between the Vanden and Coos Bay entrances and goes north to Florence, starts 13.6 miles out, covers 1,800 square miles. No traffic across those whatsoever. In fact, if you do that, you can be arrested and possibly have, take your vessel or airplane if you fly too low. Why are they going? Huh?
That's the size of the county, isn't it? 1,800 square miles.
Yeah, yeah, it is. It's just absolutely ridiculous. And then they're going to anchor these things with these giant nylon cables. They were, they were shown to me like this. I don't know how big that is, two and a half feet, three feet, several thousand feet deep. And they're going to screw anchors in the ocean floor supposedly. And that's what's going to hold them. But like I said before, this feed and tariff thing, if something goes wrong in that project, all the rate payers are on the hook for it. And this project's into multi, multi billions of dollars. So, and apparently, the federal administration has just gone home, going right for it. And our government, current government, and our two current federal senators, Senator Bond, saying, please, slow down. We need time to study this more in depth and see what kind of effects are going to happen with electromagnetic radiation from the cables and all that kind of stuff. So what did they do? They extended comment period from 30 days to 60 days, which is nothing. And next Wednesday, next week, Wednesday on the 27th, at the Coos Bay Library, from four to six, they're going to have public comment period if you want to show up and express. My research person is doing, putting in hundreds and hundreds of hours on this project. And in most cases, these windmills out in the ocean are a disaster. So that's what I, instead of going to the district conference, I was in my office for six hours listening to this diatribe, I call it, my personal opinion, with all these supposed experts about how wonderful this thing was going to be. And of course, they're all federal employees, so they were all on board. With that, the public comment. Phil, you're first.
Phil, I'm from Coos Bay. Hi. I'm still on that resolution you got. I don't think that you guys have the right to interpret the Constitution and tell the people from your side of the fence as county commissioners, you know, they don't, they can or they don't have to. We already have the right not to wear a mask. But if you want to go some worse words for it, you have to do that. And if you don't want to do it, then nobody's going to make you. But if it's mandated for the people to come in this, anybody steps in this commissioner meeting has to wear a mask, then it should be enforced. I don't care what you're going to do, anarchy, you're going to pick up any law or mandate you don't like and say, Coos County's not going. you don't like and say, Coos County's not going to enforce that. I think you're going into a deep, deep place. And this is my only opinion, my only opinion. I think you guys colluded, you and Bob, before that came to the floor, because John, he didn't have a fight with me, he knew anything about it or what it was, and he did open it up for discussion only. None of the citizens of this county knew what you guys were planning. You know? So you guys are using the office, really, for a political person. I'm sure when most of the abandoned people came in here and John and Melissa walked out, I was sure I wore a mask all the time we was in here. My wife was in the hospital at that time, and I'm like the other guy. They would not let me in to see my wife or nothing. But if that's what it takes to save other people's lives, then sometimes we got to give it a little bit. But the Constitution, I think you guys, it took the oath of office, and then you're here advocating to not uphold the state or federal mandates or laws, whatever you want to call it, you're very wrong. You shouldn't even be running for office again, as far as I'm concerned, because I've really lost the confidence in my friend, Mr. Maine, and we've been friends a lot of years. Thank you.
Excuse me for a minute, but I just stand on one foot here.
Go ahead, David.
Good morning. My name is David Jennings. I'm from Kokil, as you know. I just wanted to say that I hope we don't ever go through a process again where you have a resolution like this brought up as a late-late agenda item. I mean, technically, I don't think there is anything in the county rules that provides for a late-late agenda item. It's supposed to be things that are not on the agenda. What you have a legal right to do, but, you know, I appreciate it that the board said we do not spring these kind of things, because it causes a lot of anger and it just, I just don't think it's a good way to govern. I know one of the things I heard from some people, and I certainly don't fault that people sometimes make mistakes in this area, but I know a lot of people had the impression that there was a certain group of people that knew what the resolution was, is very familiar with it, and then pretty much everybody else didn't know anything about it. And that's understandable, but at the same time, it should be good if we didn't have those kind of surprises. One of the things that I think Commissioner Taylor might be very in agreement in general with is that often there is a claim that you have an emergency and that you absolutely have to do something right away. And that often leads you to have to do things that are unwise, or sometimes it's radical. So at the degree that it's possible, let's not use these late-late agenda items for major things and people have tremendous interest in them and leave them feeling that they were left out of it. I appreciate your job is hard, and I try to beat up on people individually and say if you could, if we didn't have these kind of things happen, if there was a resolution like that, if anyone knows the agreement, people have different viewpoints, express it, you know, board does what it feels it needs to do, and everyone needs to. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you, David. Just as a follow-up to your comments, David, I'll just say that, I'll repeat, that there was no, that is a misperception that a group of people were familiar with it. That's not true at all. And secondly, you know, I, the introduction as a late-late, that was purely just, that was just a rookie move. I didn't know the rule, so that's not going to happen again. I think that this debate is healthy. We should, we should discuss the issues that we disagree about, articulate our positions, and, you know, those should be considered. That's, that's how we, that's how we become edified together. So, that's it.
Okay, well, I appreciate that, Commissioner. And I'm not implying that you did anything deliberately wrong, it's just, again, the net result is that people are left in the dark about it.
Yeah, it's totally unintentional and...
And whether it's unintentional or maybe well, you unintentional, let's just try to avoid those things.
I agree.
Okay. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you, David.
Okay, James Bennett, send up. You want to talk about bike camp?
Public, see, one last thing on that resolution. I've spent 250, 300 hours on this whole COVID vaccine mask thing, and the part that I forgot to mention is that I can't find one, not one bought and paid for, peer-reviewed study showing that the vaccines are effective, that the masks are effective, or that the lockdowns were effective. And I want to point out that NIH, and especially CDC and the WHO, are for-profit corporations listed on Dun &amp; Bradstreet, look it up for yourself. They're captured agencies that have been taken over by Big Pharma. And there's a lot of truth that's going to be coming out in the coming months, and I believe that your resolution was on the right side of history. So with respect to this bike camp, Rod Taylor tells me that this is not a done deal yet. You haven't accepted, you haven't contractually engaged us and accepted grant money for this project? Is that correct?
There is a grant that we have not accepted, that is a grant that is paid for...
Can you give me the name of, is it an NGO or...?
Travel Southern Oregon Coast.
Travel Southern Oregon Coast.
Yes, has granted money. To, to prepare, to hire and prepare a plan for the area that we've been talking about, so that we can all see what this is going to look like.
Okay. So they approached you, and that's how, it's in the early stages?
It's in the very early stages. At this point in time, you know, we really don't have, other than a concept, much to talk about. What we're trying to do is come up with a plan that will allow you to look at it and make appropriate observations.
I appreciate that. Well, this is the reason I came today. So I just can't imagine somebody looking at the features of that road and showing up at that site and thinking that that's an appropriate place to put a bike camp. And I have flyers, I also have a petition here, I just got both yesterday, but I outline a lot of, some of the reasons that it's a bad idea on the flyer, I'm pretty sure you looked at it. Where, I mean, you've got a wide variety of vehicles on that road. You've got dump trucks, you've got clueless tourists with big motorhomes and trailers and stuff, you've got tweakers. I got ran off the road there, vehicle stolen in the body shop. It's just not an appropriate site, and we're not receptive to any bike camp there. But if, if there was to be a bike camp, I mean, you go to the top of the hill where it meets Beaver Hill at that tee, and it would be a way more appropriate site, and if you did the southwest corner, it connects with the trail network and everything. So it's every single, we're just getting started, but every single neighbor that we spoke to is against it. I didn't even get a couple that were like, didn't care. And mountain bikers, and a couple of things that the mountain bikers told me is that when it's nice weather, it's not busy when it's not, but when it's nice weather, the trails are already too busy, and that creates a safety issue. And it's just, it's just not the right site. It's a super dangerous road. And there's a lot of concerns, it could create fires, the trash, you know, and your allegiance should be to those of us that pay taxes and vote and not to a small group that, you know, just visits. So, anyway, I appreciate your, I appreciate your, your time and your consideration regarding this matter. I expected the area to get busier and get more houses and grow, and frankly, we're looking forward to that. I think the place is going to, I think Bannon Dune's going to be a hanker, I think it's going to be a high-end area. But I didn't buy into a campground 3,000 feet away.
Leslie Schmidt?
That's me. Stand up, stick your clothes. I'm Lesishman, Indian, and I live actually about a quarter mile from Jim Bennett, Seven Devils. And my concern, I actually just found about, out of this bike camp potential yesterday when he was kind enough to put up a bunch of flyers. My concern echoes Jim Bennett's, but also the idea of luring more cyclists down onto that road, especially past where it says, where the sign says, "End of Speed Zone," because it's a 35 mile an hour zone, and somebody decided in their wisdom that, oh, it's okay, you can go as fast as you want further west there because it doesn't matter. Well, that's actually where they're talking about, apparently putting this bike thing where the new curb cut is. So, it's, there's too much traffic already on that road. There, I, I actually, I like mountain biking. My thing is, I don't even go up onto Whiskey Run when it's busy, because I'm not a real aggressive mountain biker, and I'll get run over by the folks that are actually out there, you know, enjoying their skill. If we even are bringing more people into that area, people like me, I mean, I don't have any place to ride unless it's like, you know, five in the morning, because it's otherwise a lot of curves, whatever. I mean, I'm a wimpy rider, and there's a lot of us. So, and a lot of people ride along the road to get from one link to the other. A lot of people come around those corners, they're going way too fast, you can't see any of the cyclists. So to lure more people into that area is just not a great idea. And all of us locally, we use that road to get up to 101. We don't go all the way down to Rainbow. Again, we could, but it would be bad. So I would encourage people, I look forward to seeing if there is a proposal, and there is a, you know, public information officer who's going to give us information on it, so we have knowledge, that'd be great. We got information from the county on other proposals or subdividing local or whatever, so, I mean, they mailed it to us, very easily could mail it to us, or even email it, but they can't just, you know, ramrod this through, so.
I never was arguing, you know?
Oh, no, I just, I panicked.
We are not born.
Well, we didn't, we didn't know where, what the status of this thing was, did they already do it?
I have a discussion, and I look forward to visiting on this. I have other, you know, I don't share all your concerns, but I think there are answers to most of your concerns.
And depending on where it's placed.
They have all of them.
Yeah, depending on where it's placed or whatever, but thank you.
Tim Pierce.
Tim Pierce, Bannon, Oregon, once again. Thanks for letting me talk. Just a couple of things, actually, I want to talk about more than just the bike thing here, but one thing about the bike campground that I want you guys to remember, you rarely represent the people of Coos County, not the Travel Southern Oregon Coast. Now, they may want to, but they don't live here. Bicycle people that are going to be camping there are going to be spending very little money in Coos County. They can't, they have it. They're not paying a lot of money here. So just remember who you're really representing here. If you think there's going to be some sort of money game for the businesses, it's just not going to be that much. The other thing I'd like to talk about that might be a little interesting, I used to own a junk store, I've looked at home antique stores, and I've had two copies that I wish I hadn't parted with one of the 1859 Oregon State laws, and if we've got one somewhere, look it up, it was illegal to transport pulpers across county lines. Now, from what I've heard, the fair city of Eugene and Portlandia have been sending people down to Coos Bay by a bus system or whatever. We might have a good lawsuit, the money maker going here. Maybe you guys should go out and look it up, it's probably still on the books.
We hear that often, but not a lot of evidence of it.
Well, you go out and ask the people. Ask the people, the homeless, where they came from. They didn't find out, and if they've been doing this, I would doubt, I mean, I wouldn't be surprised if that book's still on, you know, that law's still on the books. It was, the reason they did that was the counties were responsible to take care of the pulpers during the Civil War. People held more allegiance to the county than they did the state and the federal government, and that's what the Pledge of Allegiance is about, by the way, and the term, "One Nation" is a blatant lie. We the people in order to form a more perfect union. It's not a nation. It's part of the federal government trying to federalize and homogenize the states and take away the rights from the county. Things were supposed to start at the county and work their way up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, Matt Wuland, Coos Bay again. So the main reason I actually came to the meeting today was to give you guys this, I'll give it to you when I'm done. I'm actually here representing Coos County Neighborhood Watch. Last month, Commissioner Taylor was there, we held a town hall at the Egyptian Theater. The town hall was regarding homelessness and crime in the county, and the town hall was actually formed in response to, I had put in a request with the Coos County Homeless Response Office with Andrew Brainerd. They had held a town hall-ish, actually called a stakeholder meeting earlier in the year at North Bend Lanes, and it was primarily the people who were involved in the, I'll use the homeless industrial complex, I mean, not all bad people, I don't mean that, but, you know, Deveraux Center, Salvation Army, Coos Health and Wellness, et cetera, people who deal with the homeless on a daily basis. There was a public comment period at that meeting, but there was only about three people who actually brought up any concerns or negative aspects. It was more of like an ooh rah rah meeting. So I requested through Andrew that the Homeless Response Office do another town hall from the opposing perspective of, these are the concerns that we have for crime and homelessness as it affects property and business owners. Andrew was very supportive of the idea initially, but he said he had to put it before, I guess they have a board, it's set up as a board, and I got a response shortly after saying that they had declined to do another town hall, and he basically gave a reason of that they said that they had, they had already offered ample time for public comment, that they had done all they could do. And I personally do not accept that answer. So we decided to do our own town hall, if the government won't do it, we, the people are the governor, can do it ourselves. We had a very successful town hall at the Egyptian Theater, had a large panel of people, I think probably had seven or eight people up on the dais, business owners, a parent of a local addict who is enabled by the Deveraux Center, varying points of view that were opposing to what had happened at the stakeholder meeting. So what we did is, I recorded the entire meeting, it's been posted to YouTube, but I have a flash drive with the video of the entire meeting, so you guys are welcome to watch that and listen to those public comments. Like I said, Commissioner Taylor was there. Also in this packet are four, five, six written statements. Certain people are, you know, nervous speaking in public, didn't want to get up there, or didn't want their names out there publicly, but they wrote statements of how these issues have affected them negatively here in Coos County. So that's all that, I'll go ahead and give it to you guys in a moment. I just want to end, I'm going to kind of kick back and go back real quick to the issue of what was just passed earlier. Most of the people who were against it have left the room, but I'll just say two quick things. There's a YouTube channel I really like, it's called The Civil Rights Lawyer. He actually goes after cities and counties and states that violate people's civil rights. He has a very simple statement that says, "Freedom is scary, deal with it." So that's one response to the people who were opposed to this resolution. And then I'm going to end with a quote from a founding father, from Samuel Adams. "If ye love wealth better than liberty, the tranquility of servitude better than the animated contest of freedom, go home from us in peace. We ask not your counsels or arms, crouch down and lick the hands which feed you. Make your chains set lightly upon you, and may austerity forget that ye were our countrymen." Thank you.
Chris, is he looking? Chris? Chris here? Okay, moving on to Richard.
Hi, I'm Richard Kuzditsky once again, and I want to comment on my comments. And basically, guys, the resolution is outside of your responsibility or rights or whatever. We elected you guys to run the county of Coos County. And keep doing the job you were elected to do, you know, keep the county running, okay?
We're doing it.
Yeah. And just forget about these resolutions that are outside of your responsibility and stuff. And one thing I'd like to throw in here, too, is the concept of freedom requires responsibility. requires responsibility to ourselves, our family, our nation, you know, whatever. But without responsibility, freedom is nothing. Anyway, that's it, keep doing the job you're supposed to do.
Thanks, Richard.
And something I would say about doing, doing the county business, you may not know, is that projected for next year, 23, 24, 25 budget is projected for the general fund department, that's sheriff, jail, dispatch, district attorney, juvenile assessor, treasury tax, county clerk, surveyor commissioner, county council, I probably lived on a couple. Anyway, we're gonna be $4 million short in that general fund department. And we're scrambling and trying to think of everything we can do to bridge that gap.
No, I, I understand, it's a very, very serious problem. And, and, you know, and there must be some mechanism where, you know, I, I mentioned the gap between, um, the property tax rates in most of Oregon, and we're like one-third of that. There must be some mechanism where we can get some of that back.
Nope.
There's no...
Under measure five and measure 50, no. You see, the rea, the reason we have such a low tax rate, lowest of all, second lowest of all 36 counties in Oregon, is that they relied on the ONC timber receipts. In the mid 80s, I figured this out here a few months ago, in today's dollars, we got $25 million. Now we got 1.3.
Yeah. And I don't know how...
And rightly so, they didn't increase the, the tax rate back then because they didn't need to at all. It would have been a disservice to people in the county to raise the property tax. They relied on those ONC timber receipts.
I mean, the crisis we find ourselves in, uh, that there, I can't believe there is some, some kind of solution to, you know, keep this place up and running.
So we're...
You know, I...
We are scratching our heads and trying to think of anything we can think of to try and bridge that gap.
It's a tough one, I don't know what... Anyway, I appreciate the figure, guys are willing to take your time.
Sandra Cullen Ward? Is she here? No, okay, we'll move on. Frances Smith is gone also. Um, lots of them. Renee Menkens? Is she here? No? Natalie Ranker's here.
I have nothing else to add, thank you.
Okay. Don Gurney? Are you here? And then we have a lady on the internet, or...
I'm a lady.
Oh, I got it, okay. Eddie Kessler?
Ray.
He'll be after Donna B.
Yeah, Rayleigh and Rod and then Ernie.
Oh, we have three. Okay.
Don Gurney from McKinley. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. You're buying lunch?
I'm gonna try to make this dwell in a second.
You said you were buying lunch?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. You pay my taxes, don't you?
You're buying lunch with your taxes. Kind of your puzzle.
I, I wanna come and talk to you a little bit about the CBW Coos Bay Wagon. Number one, I'd like the county to claim the road of what's in the county road 269. I'm not sure you're familiar with 269, but 269 is, is the road between the natural water of Coos Bay to the Douglas County line, as existing now. There's been a saying about who owns the road and all this kind of stuff. And to research and stuff, the county does own it, but they haven't admitted they own it or asked them to accept the fact that you own it. Simple enough, right? But I'm, I'm doing this because, forward of all three of you so you really understand together what you wanna do or you don't wanna do it or whatever. And I don't expect you to answer that. Number two part of it is, that I wanted you to do, is accept the original Coos Bay wagon road lands of 1874 in Coos County. Now, come, there'll be a question about how you accept it and why you accept it and all this kind of stuff. And if at some time, if you either wanna, um, work session or anything like that, we can discuss it because we don't have time now. But that's my two, two main things that I'm asking, to accept ownership of both of those roads. And thank you, and have a good lunch.
Thank you, Don.
All right, now we have online Eddie Kessler? Go ahead. Not there?
He's, he's unmuted, but he's not transmitted.
We can't hear you, Eddie.
269.
While we're trying to get Eddie, who else is up there?
Uh, Rayleigh.
Rayleigh, please, go ahead.
Yeah, just a quick question. So how many posts has the, passed the resolution, does it have to be unanimous?
No, no, majority.
Oh, so that means it passed? Okay, and it needs to know that it passed, it passed, okay. So with two miniature posts that led the resolution to pass?
Correct.
Okay, gives, gives me purpose, okay. I, I did not support it, okay. Okay, my thoughts on...
Thank you. Who else is up there?
Uh, Rob Taylor.
Rob Taylor, are you out there?
I'm out here. Um, first thing I wanna say is I wanna thank you gentlemen for the two commissioners who voted to pass the resolutions. Your job in government, the government's job, is to protect the rights of the individual, period. After that, everything else is ancillary to protecting our rights. And that's what you did with, partly with passing this resolution. So thank you to the two commissioners who did that. Second, I would like to thank Don Gurney for getting up and saying what he did because I would also like to have a work session on taking back both those roads. I think it would be very important to maybe get some experts in here, maybe to get the commission that's supposed to meet every couple of years on this road to get together with the work session and discuss this. Anything that we can do to move towards that direction of taking back those roads would be great. Number three, I wanna touch on what Matt Willface is talking about and the homeless industrial complex. I don't know if you know this, I've been harping on it for thirty, probably three decades now. Urban renewal is growing in Coos County. When I started discussing urban renewal, it was taking about $100,000 out of the county general fund. Now, today, it's taken about $450,000, and it's only growing because all of the cities are utilizing their urban renewals and increasing the urban renewal debt that the county district will have to pay for. Right now, they're taking money out of the Coos Bay County area, I don't know which area it is, 1 or 2, but it's over in South County, and they're trying to purchase a property that ha, that is next to the Coal Bank Village so that they can use it to move the Deveraux Center from Empire next to the Coal Bank Village. And they've used $25,000 of urban renewal money, and I've got suspicions that they're gonna use urban renewal money to develop that area. I don't wanna be part of the homeless industrial complex. And I know you people on the commission like getting the money from the state for the homeless problem, but I don't think that we need to have our tax dollars used in this situation. We need to reclaim the money from the state because they created the situation. And I think you need to get a handle on urban renewal being used in the homeless industrial complex. And those are my comments, and thank you.
Now, Eddie back on there?
Can try it again.
Try Eddie again?
Not making it?
Not making it, no?
I see him unmuted, but he's not transmitted.
That's too bad. You have your sounds turned on, Eddie?
More of his microphone.
No? Well, shucks, okay, well, sorry, Eddie. Thank you all, we are mature.